Start this meeting off. Here we go. We start off with a public forum.
Yes.
Are there any speakers? Oh, sorry.
Mayor Eisen, I do have quite a few emailed comments that I'll read. And for any of our attendees, if you have a comment for an item not on the agenda, please go ahead and use the raise your hand feature. And after I read the email comments, I'll call on you. The first comment is from Chris Voishard. I submitted a comment for the last city council meeting. I'm not sure if it was read or not regarding the sheriffs in our town. As your meeting was happening, the sheriff shot and killed a mentally unstable woman, perhaps unnecessarily. This is the second mentally unstable woman they have shot in our city. We do not need this exaggerated police presence on the coast during this pandemic or any time. I was horrified at the pumpkin festival when they came dressed up in camo suits, carrying guns, ruining the entire weekend. This was for a different fear de jour, a mass shooting. Another time you plan to blitz on jaywalkers and people turning on 92. Please stop the fear. Police presence does not make me feel safe. It's actually the opposite. With the amount of money you spend to have them here, why not consider having a local police department again, one that might actually know the people and the needs of our city? I do not want to live in the police state you have created here. The next is from Lisa O'Neill. I am writing concerning the proposed Dune Beach development. I would like my comments read at the next public meeting concerning this issue, please. I moved here 23 years ago from New York, and I love this little town by the sea and its friendly people. Sadly, as more development keeps happening, the traffic gets worse and worse, and the small town feel is disappearing. I know the town needs the revenue, but I feel this project needs to be scaled back quite a bit to fit in with what would work for the town. As it is, you can barely go anywhere local on the weekends. The project will only cause more traffic and congestion. It is too large for our town. Please consider talking to the developer about scaling back, or do not approve this project. It's just too big, not to mention the damage to the wildlife and ecosystem there. There has to be a better way. I feel there are enough hotels and RV parks already, and that giant conference center sounds ridiculously big. I oppose the project, and I hope you will take your local citizens' objections seriously. Thank you for your time. The next is from Michael Catigan. Although as an El Granada resident, I do not have a vote in HMB city issues, I feel strongly that the proposed development at Dune Beach would be extremely detrimental to the quality of life for all coast hiders. Increase in traffic and increase in other limited resources, sewer and water, for example, come to mind first, along with the loss of that beautiful open space. What I'd like to see strongly considered is a purchase of the properties involved so that the investors receive a fair return, but that the fields remain undeveloped or minimally developed. In the course of just a few days last week, our coast side community pledged $1 million to the Coast Side Gifts Campaign. Might not the public respond with similar generosity, given the chance to save Dune Beach? No doubt partnerships would be needed with Post or Coast Side Land Trust or other such entities, but I think the public would act to put their money where their mouths are as regards keeping the space open and in the future public. The next is from Anne Swainberg. Please, please, please do not allow Dune Beach to be developed. The coast has reached capacity for all of us, locals and visitors alike, to enjoy our beautiful open spaces. The next is from Stephen Slomka. Don't do it. Think of the children who will lose the environment where they can enjoy and learn from a wild place. Don't do it. Think of the plants, flowers, and birds who will lose their homes. Don't do it. It will destroy our uniqueness and turn us into Pacifica. Don't do it because we'll never vote for you again. Just don't do it because it's right. The next is from Rick Southern. I am one of the 40 or so semi-vocal members of the community who represent probably 95% of the community that are aware of the Dunes Development Project. I know you are hearing the same mantra every month regarding this development. Nobody wants it, drain on resources, infrastructure can't handle it, traffic would be impacted on everyone on the coast, coastal lodging capacity is already greater than what is needed, so adding more capacity would negatively impact existing businesses. And most importantly, a beautiful, natural environment, environmentally sensitive area would be destroyed and never recoverable. Local governments are often swayed by professional lobbyists and expensive lawyers and come to regret decisions that are made under pressure from outside developers. Please keep in mind the many voices that have gone on record to ask that you quash this development as soon as possible. The next is from Joyce Logan. Offering my voice to oppose the massive development in process. Not a good nor appropriate project, either short term or long term. This is offered from the perspective of one who appreciates large RVs and parks that support such use. Thank you for this opportunity. The next is from Suzanne DeSullivan. Please do not let this project move forward. What has changed? No one that lives here on the coast wants this built. I can only think the county sees dollar signs and is willing to open the floodgates for developers. Agreed. The next is from Susan Karen. It was intended for the face mask discussion, so I told her I would read it now. After listening to last week's recording, I was a bit puzzled by the lack of general understanding about the face covering mandate and the apparent lack of enforcement. Face coverings protect the people around you, not the wearer. Therefore, everyone needs to wear them to make sure we are all protecting each other. A face covering is only required if six feet physical distancing cannot be accommodated. If you are walking and running on the beach or biking on a road, you can generally distance appropriately, so a face covering is optional, not required. On a sidewalk or bike path, six feet physical distancing is not possible, as the sidewalks and bike paths would need to be at minimum 10 feet wide to accommodate two people passing each other, which they are not. Five feet is typical. Therefore, requiring people who walk, run, or ride the coastal trail to have a face covering on or available is a perfectly reasonable thing to enforce. They don't have to keep it on constantly if the trail traffic is light. I wear a bandana around my neck and simply pull it up when I am 10 feet away from those in front of me, or if I hear a runner or biker coming up behind me. This trail gets very narrow in places, so no one should be going so fast that pulling up a face covering for a few moments would impede their breathing. And on that note, it is the risk of non-symptomatic heavy breathers and loud talkers coming into contact with others on a narrow trail that could be a cause of COVID-19 spread without face coverings to prevent this. Think of the older folks and mothers pushing their prams on this trail. Not good. For the health and welfare of our entire community, the use of face coverings while on the coastal trail and other hiking trails in San Mateo County needs to be mandatory and enforced strictly to keep everyone safe. If this means signs being posted, free masks being handed out, and fines enforcing the mandate being issued, so be it. What is more important than keeping the virus at bay and all people safe from the spread of COVID-19? If people have issues with wearing a face covering, they do have other choices. Stay home or stick to wide open spaces to exercise. No one could possibly be so adamant about not wearing a face covering if it is widely understood that this saves lives. Signage and enforcement will make this more widely understood, I hope, as it certainly does not seem to be the case yet. On another note, I was appalled at the person saying the police were treating people terribly. First of all, the sheriffs have been entirely too kind to the people they stopped to talk to. I see this every day. They give too many warnings and not enough fines. People take advantage. But they should not even have to deal with people behaving badly and defying mandates, but they do, and with tireless patience and grace. It's a shame people who visit our community, and quite frankly, a few people who live in our community as well, can also rise to the occasion and behave similarly. And then Lisa is going to read our last emailed comment, and then we can move on to our live speakers. Lisa?
Good evening. This email is from Edwin Farren. Council members, thanks again for providing the community an opportunity to participate in your meetings during the SIP. I hope that one of the many lessons you take away from this period is that opening the meeting to comments in this way provides those community members, who for a variety of reasons may be unable to attend these meetings in person or at the scheduled time, the ability to participate in the civic process remotely and on their own schedule. So I hope this practice is continued when in-person meetings are again made possible. Tonight, regarding the Dune Beach proposed development, I'd only like to communicate how deeply felt opposition to the project is throughout the coast side. Feelings about this run deep. The development of this monstrosity at the practical center of our beautiful coast side would be a violation of the highest sort. The owners slash developers have a well-documented history of using any means necessary to steamroll, bribe, and otherwise cajole communities to swallow their outsized development. Don't be fooled by their slick brochures filled with blue conic, blue conic pictures. I apologize.
We got it.
And echo-friendly jargon such as quote "light touch" unquote and quote "low scale" and environmentally sensitive unquote. It's propaganda, plain and simple. Another example is how they pictorially depict the RV park. It is portrayed as sparsely populated with cute silver mini airstreams, when we all know that the reality will be a wall of massive recreational vehicles that are much more common on our roads. This is not just like any other project, and it holds much greater impact than that which is bounded within its 50 acres. Fundamentally, the decision on this is a decision about one's vision for the type of community we want in the future, Malibu North or a coast side that retains its natural values and qualities. Safeguard our coast side's characters. Do not approve the amendment to the local coastal plan that the developer has requested. Then turn your attention to preserving these properties as agricultural and/or open space in perpetuity. I implore you, do the right thing. Edwin Farren, El Granada.
Thanks, Lisa. And we do have one live speaker with a raised hand. David Oblovy, go ahead.
Hey there. Actually, building on what Edwin just said, I'm sitting 50 feet to the south of Bob, painting the front of my wife's store and making a comment at a public meeting. And if that doesn't show how the world has changed, I don't know what does. So I want to speak tonight on the shooting two weeks ago, because I have some concerns that I'm hoping the city and the council can address. First, I want to say that this was an absolute tragedy for everybody involved. The woman who was killed, the deputies who killed her. People think that it's, you just forget it and it goes away and everything's great. You don't. So I want to emphasize that any comment I make here is not meant to diminish the pain that this incident has brought to many, many people. With that said, California passed a law that went into effect last year, which requires the release of video cameras or body cams, dash cams and the like, within 10 days of the request, of the requister. If you don't release, meaning the police agency, if you do not release the images, you have to reply in writing, under the PRA, that means 10 days, you have to reply in writing with an explanation of the basis for your denial. And to be clear, an administrative or criminal investigation is not grounds for denying access to the video. The only thing that is grounds for access is a witness would be compromised, for example, or some other exigent event which would cause the investigation to be compromised. In any case, media, local media has applied or did apply the next day for access to the body cam videos, and they've been getting, I'm not privy to that conversation, but let's just put it this way, they don't have them in their possession yet, and they should, and they do not have an explanation in writing with the basis for the denial of those images either. This concerns me deeply because going to the obvious anger that the woman had that spoke first tonight, transparency is the ultimate savior of both any police agency and the community. If the community trusts the police agency to provide accurate and truthful information, then they will trust them to do their job. Flip side of the coin is, if the police agency sticks its head under the sand and doesn't provide information that they're legally required to provide, when they're legally required to provide it, then people start going, wait, why are they doing that? What's missing? What are we missing? Why are we missing this? I'd like to ask the council specifically to do two things tonight. Obviously, you can't take action based on what I'm saying. I get that. But my point is, I want you to reach out to the Sheriff's Department and make sure that they understand that you are the primary agency in the city of Happen Bay, and as such, you're responsible for law enforcement in the city of Happen Bay, and you expect them to follow the law, plain and simple. Not saying you would tell them how to enforce the law, but you do expect them to follow the law. And the second thing is, I would like you to immediately reach out to, I guess Saul is on this call still, I'm assuming he is, and get both the explanation that we were owed days ago, more than that, and a date by when we're going to have the videos in our possession. Having that will go a long way towards answering questions in the community about what the hell happened, and it will go to build trust between the community and the Sheriff's Department. As always, thank you for listening.
Saul, I believe you are on the line. Do you want to quickly respond to that real quick?
I am, and again, I'll agree with Mr. Oblovy that it is a tragic event that impacted not only the family, but also the deputies involved. I can't speak to specifics of what is going on in the investigation, but that evening when it occurred, we did call the district attorney's investigators out to the scene. They assumed the investigation. I spoke to them on the phone today. They have up to 60 days to investigate the incident, presented to District Attorney Steve Wagstaff. He then has an additional 30 days to make a determination of the incident. On the PRAs, I am not aware of any PRA requests. They have not come to me directly, so I will inquire with headquarters and also county council, and that's where those requests usually go. So I will look into that tomorrow morning. I'll send an email tonight and follow up in the morning to see what the status is, and I'm sure that they will respond to, if it's a Happen Bay review or any other media source, I'm sure they're going to respond in due time.
Excellent. Thank you, Saul. And thank you, David, for bringing it up. Are there any other speakers before I move on to proclamations and presentations? Debbie Riddick, I'm so sorry. Yep. Debbie, Debbie, we can't hear you yet. Yeah. But I think you want to talk, and I'm not sure.
Yeah. So I think Mr. Oblovy is referring to the Weber bill that was signed into law last year. So I would just ask the city attorney to review the law as relates to the release of police videos. I'd like to have an answer on that topic.
Will do, and I'll coordinate with Saul on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
We do have one more public speaker. Janey Zorzy, go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to thank, I'm Jeannie Zorzy, and I sent an email to a number of you yesterday about an incident that happened on my property on Sunday evening, and I wanted to thank all of you for responding and to Mr. Nesbit for informing me about this meeting tonight. I'm unfortunately in pandemic schooling my great niece in San Diego, so I wasn't available at 6 o'clock, which I think was when you were discussing the issues about the beaches and the state, California State Park not opening restrooms or parking lots. And I just wanted to let you know that I am extremely upset about what happened on my property on Sunday, and I'm not, I'm now going to have to install security cameras, and I would like to be able to do whatever I can to secure myself and my neighbors. One of your, one of the respondents indicated that there's a shortage of signage in Happen Bay right now to keep people out, and I would be happy to either rent or purchase or create my own signage as long it was, as long as it was in line with your requirements as a city council. And I would also like to know who I can contact in the California, in the state of California, to send my email to them and to convey to them my horror at what they're allowing to happen in our town.
I would appreciate you joining. We, yeah, a lot of, I think you, a lot of the council members received your letters. Saul's been, we've talked to him about it, our police chief sheriff, and you're gonna, we will, we will ensure your safety. You're on our radar. So we hear what you have to say. Sorry that it happened, and we got you. That's about, anybody else? Do we need to, anything else on that one?
If I may, ma'am, if in the future, hopefully it doesn't occur again, but if you do see people that are suspicious in your front yard, please call 911 or our non-emergency number, and we'll send a deputy right away to address the issue. I have directed my staff to conduct some passing checks here. They are constantly in the Miramar area due to the fact that it's one of the points where a lot of the visitors do try to park and go down the coastal trail in that area. So again, please call us if you do see somebody you do not recognize and are suspicious.
What is being done about the sheriff enforcing the 11 to 5 ban on visitors to the beach and on outside visitors being in this area and parking during that time?
Yeah, I appreciate the question here. I'm going to ask you, if you don't mind, to go and just listen in to our 6 o'clock time period meeting, and you'll hear all the answers of what came out from there, and just in the essence of time to continue our meeting, because we go late into the night. Just listen in to the 6 PM. You can, it's recorded, and you'll get all the answers that you're looking for.
Could I get a contact for the state? And could I get a contact to follow up on getting some signs for our area?
Jeannie, staff will reach out to you after this meeting.
Okay.
Further answer your questions and connect on that.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jessica. Good. All right. Very good. Is there any other public comments? So we are moving on to proclamations and presentations?
Yes.
Okay. I believe we have two presentations or proclamations, at least.
Yeah, we first have Claire from Midcoast to provide an update on the Midcoast Community Council. Claire, go ahead.
Okay, I guess I'm on now.
Yep, we hear you.
Yes, Claire Tuttan with Midcoast Community Council. We had a letter approved at our last meeting, asking the county not to make any planning decisions that would imply any future financial commitment to them. We feel like two things are happening right now that are both pretty obvious. One is that there's much diminished ability for the public to express their opinions about various things that might come before the council or before the county. The virtual meetings are better than nothing, but we don't feel like they reach as many people as they should in the usual ways. And also, obviously, the county doesn't know what kind of money it's going to have in the future. Nobody does. And we don't think it's prudent for the county to make planning decisions that would commit them, commit them to funding that they may not have. So we're asking that the county not make any planning decisions that would involve future expenditures until the end of this year, in order to give a chance for the community to give adequate input and for the county to know what the status of the finances are. We're doing this because there are two ongoing projects that are coming to a head at this point. One involves the Connect the Coast Side, which perhaps in itself doesn't commit the county to anything, but it does provide for frameworks that county will be following in the future, and also the amendment to the LCP that would allow for the affordable housing complex in Moss Beach to be built. We're concerned that the finances won't be available for either of those projects to continue as originally planned. In addition, they're now proposing street closures, temporary traffic lights, and one-way streets in Moss Beach for the service of the housing development, which we're not even sure is actually going to happen. So we're asking them not to make any planning decisions that would involve future expenditures. This doesn't apply to anything that's already been approved, like Big Wave, doesn't apply to anything that's privately built, that doesn't involve county infrastructure, but it involves major commitments. So we're asking not to do anything for a year. And that's, that's the main thing we've done. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
While we're on it, let's, you know, during our 6 PM, I'm not sure if you were there, we brought up the garbage at Surfers Beach. And there was, there was a reference to something about the harbor picking up that garbage or being responsible for. Do you know anything about that aspect, just so we can, as we follow up with that?
That's always, that particular area there is always kind of a Bermuda Triangle kind of place, because it's the city and the county and Granada Community Services and Harbor District, all having some overlapping responsibilities. And I guess what was said at that meeting was that that's the harbor's responsibility to pick up the trash. I don't know if that's true, but it's certainly plausible. It's a little hard to tease those things out sometimes.
No question. There is no question that that is difficult to tease out. So good, good, good information. Thank you. And thank you for attending our meetings and keeping us abreast of everything going on in the midcoast. Appreciate it very much. Anything else from any other council members? Good. Claire, anything else from you? I'm so sorry, just to make sure.
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Yep. Thank you so much for reporting out. We appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. And then next on the proclamations and presentations is?
We have the proclamation honoring National Boat Safety Week, which is May 16 through the 22nd of this year.
Okay. And can I quickly talk to boat safety?
Yeah.
Okay. So National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters, so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out of the water throughout the year. When it comes to safety on the water, it is critical to be a conscientious, aware, and responsible boat operator, and to ensure your boat is properly vetted and operational. I urge those who boat to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating. Together, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal inland and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. On behalf of the city council, we hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 16 through the 22nd, 2020, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. Go boaters, be safe.
Thank you, Mayor Eisen. We have Randy Tan from the U.S. Coast Guard here to accept the proclamation. Randy, if you have any comments, go ahead.
This is Randy Tan. I want to thank city council and city staff for taking the time to recognize this important issue. Wearing a life jacket is the first step. You mentioned some other things. I just want to clarify what the, I am part of the volunteer civilian branch of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. I'm a vessel examiner. I also serve the Happen Bay community by offering courtesy safety checks. And so for boaters, they can get a free, non-punitive courtesy check of all the federally required equipment that they need to keep on their vessel. This includes paddlecraft. With the popularity of stand-up paddle and kayaks, we also serve that community as well. And we have a specific outreach to the paddlecraft community and our area of responsibility. I'm part of Flotilla 46 out of Redwood City, that we serve Happen Bay waterways as well. So again, thank city council and city staff for taking the time to acknowledge this. We have orders to stand down and cease face-to-face interactions, but we look forward to serving the but we look forward to serving the boating community, uh, once all of this passes.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us and thank you for that. You, you have two of my favorite things in there, free and non-punitive. Those, the, both of those things I enjoy.
We're, yes, we're all about recreational boating safety and having a good time on the water.
Excellent. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, okay. Um, and there is another proclamation that we are doing this evening, I believe, as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for the boat safety. And now we are moving on to our next one. Uh, do you want to introduce it, Jessica, and then I'll talk about it real quick?
Sure. So we are also proclaiming and honoring LGBTQ Pride Month, which is the month of June 2020. And to accept the proclamation, uh, after you present it, we have Jenny Walter and Janey Vargas from Coast Pride. And we also have Tanya Beat, who is the director of San Mateo County's LGBTQ Commission.
Excellent. Oh, very good, very honored to have you all join us this evening. So Pride Month, the city of Half Moon Bay has a diverse LGBTQ community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. June has become a symbolic month in which LGBTQ persons and allies come together in various celebrations of pride to support the community's right to live their lives out loud. This year, it is more difficult by COVID-19 for us to physically come together as LGBTQ persons and allies. And we encourage creative ways to celebrate at a distance. Flying the rainbow flag, also known as the pride flag, at city hall throughout the month of June further symbolizes the city's celebration of diversity and support for the LGBTQ community. We will be adopting a resolution to that effect this evening. On behalf of the council, we do hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month. Express our support for Pride Month and the LGBTQ community by flying the rainbow flag at city hall and invite everyone in our city to reflect on ways we can live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. Hear, hear.
Thanks, Mayor Eisen. So Jenny or Tanya, go ahead with any comments?
Um, good evening. Um, thank you, Mayor Eisen, city council members, and a special thank you to Jessica for putting this on the agenda and working on this. Really appreciate that. Um, I'm gonna read my comments to make it brief. Uh, my name is Tanya Beat. My pronouns are she, her, hers, and I'm the director of the county's LGBTQ commission. Um, on behalf of the commission, I really want to thank the city of Half Moon Bay for this proclamation and flag raising. Um, you really join a movement of inclusion and visibility uh, in the county that impacts all LGBTQ residents here along the coast and across the county. Um, the commission has invited all cities throughout the county to show some visibility this year and in simple ways. So during this time of social distancing, uh, acts of visibility create a deeper sense of connection, inclusion, not just for the community, the LGBTQ community, but for everyone. Um, they see this as a safe place to be and to be proud of. So thank you for your support of LGBTQ history of visibility and inclusion and especially for working with Coast Pride. You know, I, Coast Pride is, is an amazing organization, um, and Jenny will talk more about that. Um, and Jenny, as a former commissioner, helped to create that visibility here on the coast. My one last thing or two last things are if the residents of the city want to partake in pride this year, we had to make everything virtual. So we're turning all events into a week-long, um, party, let's just say, from June 8th to June 13th. And people have options to take part in, in a variety of things. When that website is ready this week, I will send that on to you all as well. And the commission itself actually has two vacancies. Um, so we are looking for two commissioners. We would love to have more commissioners from the coast side, uh, participate. And the deadline to apply is June 15th. Um, and I can also send that, uh, information forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenny Walter and, um, Tanya, thank you so much for all the work you've been doing on the commission. I have to give a big call out to Tanya who's been working tirelessly, um, with all of the cities and, um, uh, I was, used to be chair of the, uh, the first co-chair of the San Mateo County Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender and Commission, and I'm now vice chair of Coast Pride. And I want to point out that our president is here as well. Jeannie Vargas, um, is also joining us, but she's asked me to say a few words. So, um, it's my privilege and honor to really thank you from the bottom of my heart for adopting this resolution commemorating, um, Pride Month and raising the rainbow flag, which, as you pointed out there, is identified with our LGBTQ community. Um, your action today raises awareness and visibility of LGBTQ residents, employees, and visitors and signals what we already know about our city, which is that it embraces all diversity. Originally established to honor the 1969 Stonewall Riots, Pride has expanded in so many places for a month-long celebration, including pride parades, picnics, parties, educational events, um, memorials for those who've been lost to hate crimes and HIV and AIDS and other group gatherings. And as Tanya indicated, because we cannot celebrate in groups due to COVID-19, it is that much more important to continue this longstanding tradition that really brings us all together, um, as we grapple with the physical distancing, the economic strain and in, in our health and our wellness. So I want to just thanks to our amazing community, um, who's helped bring about Coast Pride and to you, our civic leaders, that Coast Pride is able to mark June with several events aimed at improving society's attitudes and encouraging inclusiveness. So we're planning some fun at the Barn Restaurant. We're planning a car parade down Main Street when you raise the flag. And we are posting educational resources and more. And so we invite you to join us in these events and to publicize them along with our partners, the commission with Tanya and also with Cabrera Unified School District, which is considering a similar resolution at its next board meeting. So huge, huge thank you and call out to all of you, um, mayor, council members, um, Jessica, staff, everybody. We really appreciate it and think it's a great opportunity to find ways to, as you said, Mayor, creatively bring us together. So thank you.
Very good, very good. And, uh, I'm just so sorry, but is there another speaker on this topic before we move on or not?
I just want to say thank you all so much. Um, we really appreciate it and we're looking forward to at least a honk and wave down the streets.
I can honk and wave. These are, these are things. Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for all the work you do in this community. We really appreciate it. Uh, okay. Are there any other proclamations and presentations?
Karen.
Good. Just wanted to make sure. Uh, so next item is mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. And I just want to thank the community. Uh, this was mentioned, I think, a little bit during, oh, during our 6:00 PM call. Uh, and, you know, Coastside Gives, uh, just happened and there are many organizations that achieve their goal for the entire year through this one event. And I just want to thank the community for participating and being involved. Uh, and I also, uh, I helped participate in kind of, uh, a, a little roundabout for one of the groups through different neighborhoods and, you know, Hatchie was out and we kind of went through different neighborhoods and people were honking horns and doing all the various things. So, um, I just, I was really proud of the community. So thank you all for that. And that's all I have on that topic. Anybody else want to say anything real quick while we have it? Any, on, any, any topic I might be missing? Okay. And then report out from recent closed session meetings?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, community. Is my audio working okay?
Yes.
Great. I had some problems earlier, so I had to log off and log back in. Uh, so the council met in closed session earlier today, um, to meet on one topic. Um, that topic was, uh, conflict with labor negotiators, um, and it met with its agency-designated, um, representatives, Lisa Lopez, Initiative Services Director, and Bob Nisbet, city manager, to provide direction regarding, uh, labor negotiations with the employee organization, Stationery Engineers Local 39. Uh, the council provided direction to its representatives and took no reportable action at that time.
Excellent. Thank you, Captain. And then on to, uh, city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have, uh, one presentation today. I think Colleen Lutary is gonna go through all the submissions from our recent, uh, youth, uh, art contest that we had. And then when she's done with that, I do want to do a little long-range uh, agenda management and just go over, uh, upcoming city council meetings as we go through the month of July. So I'll do that at the end.
Excellent.
Colleen?
Hello again. Long time no see. Uh, I'm gonna get this, uh, screen sharing thing correct this time. Um, so yes, we are, uh, we did, as you know, the city launched a youth art project around our Wave of Strength campaign, um, with the theme, what does strength look like to you? Uh, the contest closed this past Friday and we received 31 entries from the youth on the coast. So that's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Uh, there are some really great artistic pieces and I just wanted to share them with you in the public tonight. So we're gonna go ahead and go through them. All right. So city manager updates, you know, so this is from, and apologies, uh, ahead of time if I mispronounced the names incorrectly. Uh, this is Sarai, age 15. Um, a lot of these came, uh, I reached out to the school district and their principals and they shared it with their art teachers. So the art teacher shared it with all their students. So we got a handful from, um, a lot of the art students. And so these are some of them. Um, this is Aiden. Let me know if I go too fast through them or if there's one that you particularly love. Uh, Grace in ninth grade. Cami, ninth grade as well. If you can't read, it says you are not worth it, you're a loser, you suck. And then on the other side, it says, I am worth it, you cannot break me down. Kailani, ninth grade. Natalie, 10th grade. Connor, 12th grade. Jacqueline, 11th grade. I do one of these. Veronica, 10th grade. Says, always remember you have the strength, the patience, and the passion to reach for the stars to change the world. Isabel, 10th grade. Iobin, 11th grade. Alejandra, 12th grade. Sitali, 16. And on the right there, it says, strength in unity. Callum, age 8. Zosha, age 6. Toby, age 9. Sydney, age 11. Chloe, age 11. Jasmine, age 11. Dakota, age 7. Wyatt, age 12. Says cowboys are tough, they know, don't quit. This is Amaya, who's six and a half. Bryson, age 4. He wanted to submit two. So this is also from Bryson. This is Jezebel, age 8. Who believes that dance is what makes you strong and music, I believe. Sienna, 4th grade. Maribel, age 6. Luca, age 9. Yoda Best, that's cute. And then this is his twin brothers. Anthony. And this is from Luke Williams. Yasena, age 18. And that is it. So I just wanted to say thank you so much to all the youth who participated. Um, we will be featuring art in our upcoming budget book, um, on the city's social media and we'll be putting together a voting committee to pick winners from each of the age groups. Uh, that will have their design featured on light pole banners along Main Street and we'll get a tour of city hall and a meeting with the mayor once we are back and operating normally. Each one of these pieces is truly special and from the heart, and we really enjoyed receiving them. Thank you so much.
I think this is a fabulous idea. Really great. Yeah.
I have to say, we have great artists in this community. I am not one of them, but it is nice to see other people with artistic talent. Uh, so I appreciate, that's, that's beautiful work. Um, very inspiring. So appreciate all that work that was put into it. Thank you all in the community. Uh, and thank you for organizing, Colleen and Jessica. And I believe, well, I think this was Deborah, Deborah Penrose, this was your idea? No, okay.
The census contest.
Okay, either way. Great idea, whoever came up with it. Thank you for, for organizing and making it happen. Um, all right. Uh, anything else, uh, Bob, on city manager updates?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to just briefly go over the calendar, um, just so all is aware of what's coming up. Um, so we're in the last meeting of May right now. And we have two meetings in June, June 2nd and June 16th. And, um, those do look to be pretty full agendas. And of course, the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget will be on both, um, days. So the, the um, process we normally follow is we bring it on the first June meeting. Uh, the budget at that point is 90% done. We take, have a public hearing, take final council input, and then at the second June meeting, June 16th, we then bring back uh, the revised budget based on the input we receive, uh, with the recommend, recommendations at that time for the for the council to approve both the fiscal year operational budget and the five-year CIP. So that's what's coming in June. Just as a reminder.
Mayor, quickly on that one, real quick. So the first meeting is the meeting on the, with the budget where we're kind of like really focusing in as council and kind of making recommendations and debating different topics. The second one of those is generally the finalization of all that and rather more quick. Would you, is that generally how it?
I haven't, I haven't been here in past years, but that, that is how it worked last year. And that's, I think, a good way to do it. I mean, we certainly, I think it's always a good process to do two steps. We don't want to just bring it to you and expect you to approve it at that point. You get, you get, you've already had a work session on it, a couple of work sessions, but you get one last chance to really go through it. We'll make a thorough presentation. And if there are changes, we can still make changes, you know, changes that, at that time and bring those back in two weeks. As it went last year, it was pretty smooth. And when we got to that second meeting, it, it was very quick. Yeah, that's true.
Okay, good. Just, just checking some. I understand my own. Yeah.
So I'm guessing the SAM budget will be on the first meeting in June as well.
We are bringing the SAM budget as well. Thank you, Councilmember Riddick. To bring that as well. So both, yeah, without going into detail, June is, June, June are both full at this point. Then, just as a reminder, the first July meeting is dark. That would, would be on July 7th, but that was determined to be dark when the schedule was approved at the beginning of the year. So then the next meeting is not until July 21st. So just, you know, look at the gap. That is a five-week gap and that gives the ability for the council to plan accordingly. Then the way the council agenda was set up when it was approved in January was that the next, the first meeting in August, August 4th would also be dark. At this point, I don't have a definitive recommendation, but looking at our long range, how things are lining up, I believe we may need August 4th. And so without any commitment, I just wanted to announce that to the council so you could at least kind of tentatively put that on your calendar that we might need to come back to you to reserve August 4th and put it back on, on your calendar.
You gotta love Bob Nesbit. I mean, this guy has been begging me for more meetings. More meetings and more meetings. He's so dedicated. I love it.
You do get the five-week break between June 16th, after you approve a budget, which is a big deal. And then you don't come back until July 21st. So I think that's probably a good break for everyone. And given that things are starting to open up, it does feel like we get through that budget and we'll have something to celebrate and it will be good timing.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Okay, with that, I believe we can move on to the resolution, to the, I'm sorry, to the consent calendar. Is that right at this point? Yep, just checking. So moving on to the consent calendar. I guess, are there maybe entertaining motions? Does anybody want to discuss any of the items? Councilwoman Riddick?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Cool.
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item 1A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, warrants for the month of April 2020. Item 1C, acceptance of public improvements under the city. Maintain system for Pacific Ridge subdivision phase two. Item 1D, final acceptance of the Ocean View Park restroom replacement project. CIP project number 610. Item 1E, side letter amending the current memorandum of understanding with representative, representative management team. Item 1F, policy regarding the display of flags at city facilities. Item 1G, display of the LGBTQ flag for the month of June 2020 at City Hall to commemorate Pride Month.
Second. Perfect. And then Jessica, would you be willing to go through that? Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Very good. Thank you. And we're moving on to ordinance, ordinances and public hearings, which I don't believe we have any, but I'm just going to double check before we move forward. Good. Okay. And then we are on to staff. We are on to resolutions and staff report. We will start off with item 3A, which is the award of the construction contract and professional services agreement for the Ocean Colony Pump Station Enforce Main Project. CIP number 9025 for reference.
Hi, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for letting us bring this forward to you tonight. I'm going to pass the baton to Maz and he's going to give you a brief presentation on this. Again, we want to thank you for your perseverance and patience as we work through this process of getting this project through. And Maz will give you some additional updates, but in the end, that perseverance may have allowed us to market time better and, and get a savings that the, that is very positive for us. So Maz, take it away.
Give me some spin here, Maz. I like it.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here to talk tonight about this, the Ocean Colony Pump Station Enforce Main Replacement Project. The project and sewer, sewer infrastructure overall is going to be a major focus for the, for the, especially the engineering division for the upcoming fiscal year. We're going to be touching on it now with this project and we'll be discussing it a little bit more in the future item when we talk about the CIP as a whole. Tonight, our recommendation before you is to award and execute the construction contract for the pump station enforcement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Ranger Pipeline, in the amount of $2,992,275 and approve a contingency in the amount of 15% or $313,000, about approximately $140 for potential change orders, as well as executing a professional services agreement with Schaff and Wheeler, consulting civil engineers for construction support of the project in the amount of $79,915. And also to execute, allow the city manager to execute other minor agreements related to the project. A little background on this project, the Ocean Colony Pump Station Enforcement have reached their service life. There was a reliability assessment done a few years back that noted a number of deficiencies of the pump station, insufficient pump capacity being one, no redundancy in controllers for the system, as well as no, as well as no bypass bump pumping connection for emergencies. These are all also mentioned and cited as concerns by the regional water board in their inspections and oversight of our pump station and our sewer management system. And so as part of a coastal development permit was issued, was approved for this project. That was done in the planning commission of March 26th of last year. Since then, we have been working on several items as well as completing the design. The project overall will reconstruct the pump station, including replacing all pumps, piping, valves, electrical equipment and emergency generator. We'll also be expanding the wet wall capacity as well as adding the new redundant level controls and of course, adding the addition of the pump bypass connection. The force main as well, it's, it's an old pipe. It's, it's about approximately 60 years old. It's, it's reached its service life. And being a force main, it's under quite a bit of pressure during pumping operations. And so we will be reconstructing that force main, including new mainline pipes, manholes and abandoning the existing force main. The bid, the project went out to bid on February 19th and we ended up extending it about 30 days in response to contractors dealing with COVID-19 issues and, and trying to figure out how operations were going to move forward during that uncertain time. We held the pre-bid meeting on March 12th that was attended by a number of contractors right before the shelter in place took, took hold. And we, at the end of it, we received four bids at the end of the advertisement period. Here's our, here's our summary. Our original engineer's estimate for the project was $2.6 million. Ranger Pipeline was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at $2,9275. And we had a range of up to 2.9 million. The low bid is 20% below the engineer's estimate, which is, which is a tell of our certain economy at the moment and where, where folks are in the construction cost index. It's very favorable numbers from our perspective, being that they came in 20% low. And this estimate of 2.6 was a number that we've been holding and adjusting a little bit here and there as time was going on. But again, we, certainly we're not expecting 20% below the engineer's estimate. And it just kind of goes to show the, the area. The highest bid was about 11% over the engineer's estimate. Next steps for the project after tonight would be to prepare our contract documents and start the process of issuance of insurance and bond requirements for the contractor. We will be finalizing agreement with Ocean Colony Home Works Association on some of the temporary impacts related to the project. And we're also going through the process of solicitation of a biological firm to conduct the necessary monitoring that's required as outlining the project's coastal development permit. With that, that, that'll pretty much end my, my portion of the presentation. I have the recommendation up for the screening on the screen again, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, very good. Maz, excellent presentation. Thank you. Thank you for the, the background. Do, I'm going to bring it to council for questions, clarifying questions. Then we'll see if we have any public comments and then we'll bring it back to council for deliberation. So are there any clarifying questions to start off? And I'm so sorry if I can't see you. Let me just make sure. Just speak up if you have questions. Okay, may I ask a few questions? Is that okay to start off? My first question is, I mean, I don't know, have we used Ranger before? What, what, what do we know about the history of working with Ranger as a company? We've used Schaff and Wheeler before. And so as you're answering the first question, just, just kind of what is our history with Schaff and Wheeler? And obviously, they've been deeply involved in this project since, what, 2015 or something like that, many, many years. So I mean, it makes sense to, to continue to use them, but just, just give me perspective. And then is 15% a reasonable, you know, as you're saying, I, I would imagine they'll probably go slightly over budget. Is 15% contingency? Usually I think we do 10%, so I'm just curious how we got to 15. Those are my starting questions.
Sure, absolutely. I'm happy to answer those questions, Mr. Mayor. The first part regarding Ranger Pipelines and Schaff and Wheeler, I'll, I'll speak a little bit about our consultants. Schaff and Wheeler was contracted by the city a number of years ago to assess the, the pump stations and the reliability of the pump stations. And with that, the resiliency report was produced about, I believe it was 2016, with recommendations for our infrastructure, one of them being the Ocean Colony Pump Station and the Force Main. And as part of that, it showed that the, the system was aging, that there was gaps with current waterboard requirements for redundancy. And so the city in 2017 started the process of going under contract for the full design package. This project has been going under design and environmental review for a couple of years now. It's, project is a little challenging in the location, obviously, and some of the nuances surrounding that. So we've worked with Schaff and Wheeler very closely, very, and very well over the last couple of years. And we've gotten to the point where the project is ready for construction. With that, it's pretty common to work with the designers on record for construction support, especially for a project of this nature. It has a lot of mechanical and electrical systems that are, that are part of the construction. There could be a lot of nuances to it that we want to make sure that we have the best available consultants to support us. And being Schaff and Wheeler has done this types of projects on a number of, a number of jurisdictions and has worked well for us on the, in design, that was part of the rationale for recommending them to be the supporter of the construction from that perspective.
Yeah, go ahead. And then, yeah, and then Ranger, I mean, just what, I mean, I'm sure you did your vetting, but what, what kind of company is that? And like their, their last project, like, did we talk to the city and make sure that they were happy with what they received? And, you know, all the various things. It's a lot of money to invest and I'm happy to do it. I just want to make sure. It's, it's a, it's a major project.
Hey Maz, let me just jump first. I want to remind everybody that we are in a public bidding requirement. So there is a statutory requirements, which basically is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. You know, so barring some really, really unique circumstances, we don't have a choice once we have decided and determined. Our choices are basically to say, we're not going to move forward with this project. But if we're going to move forward, that, that's where we are. So I just want to be clear and why, you know, that reference is important. And we certainly have done that, but I also want to make it clear that we are in a, in a, in a, you know, a public bidding requirement. So there isn't a lot of choice in the matter if we're going to move forward with the project. But Maz can speak to Ranger. They have, they have a very good reputation.
Okay, that's all I need to know. That's all I mean, because, I mean, I get, I get the, the way that the process works. I'm more concerned with the fact that I've never personally, obviously, I'm not a sewer expert by any stretch of the imagination, heard of this company. And I don't have my own personal history with them. We're investing $2 million. So I just want to make sure, because the, the other piece of my quick question, then I'll let it, let it go, is we've had history where a job is done poorly and we've also had a history of jobs being done poorly where other people have been the designer or of the project. And then the designer of the project and the constructor of the project are saying, oh, it's, it's your fault. Oh, no, it's your fault. How are we preventing that from happening here? As these are two totally separate entities.
You want to tackle this one, John? So I'll just, I'll just mention on that front. So this, the overall management of the, of this project will be multiple folds. We have the designer of record that will be supporting the construction. Their role will be to look at technical documents that come in, request for information from the contractor and kind of support the city staff that'll be managing the project. The engineering division and with consultant support will be doing the, the day-to-day operations as far as the inspections and oversight and construction management. So we will have eyes, eyes on the field as well as in the office on budget, as well as the technical documents that come through. So we will have that layer, the multiple layers of oversight. The construction support that the designer's providing is very specific to questions and concerns about the design that, that may arise as we move forward with the construction. But rest assured, we will have our own city staff that will be inspecting and overseeing the project. We have our project manager Denise Hutton, who is our associate engineer, who has been involved with the project from day one and who will continue to be the project manager through construction. I, of course, will be supporting in, in ways that I can, as well as our, our public works inspector that will be doing inspections and routine inspections and ensuring that things are progressing adequately. And just to mention on the, on the Ranger Pipelines, I mean, not to, not to echo John, but I'll just mention that I've worked with Ranger Pipelines in the past on underground utility projects in other jurisdictions. And I've, and I've had good experiences with them on those projects. And of course, we did do our background check with the references that they listed to ensure that this project is similar to what they've done in the past and everything has checked out well.
Awesome. Awesome. Great work. That, that gives me a lot of, a lot more confidence. Thank you for that. Because obviously, a job done poorly is more expensive than a job done more expensively at the start well. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're aligned on all those different talking points before we go into something like this. So appreciate those answers and appreciate you doing all the research. Thank you from, from my perspective at least. At this point, are there any public comments on this?
I don't have any emails or hands raised.
Okay, very good. And then at that, at that point, then is there anything else that any other council members would like to? Okay, very good. And then uh at that at that point, then is there anything else that any other council members would like to uh address or deliberate on, or maybe entertain a motion?
I will make a motion.
Yep.
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and execute a construction contract for the Ocean Colony Pump Station and Force Main Project CIP number nine zero two five to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder Ranger Pipelines Inc. of San Francisco, California, in the total bid amount of two million ninety-two thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars, and approve a contingency in an in an amount not exceeding fifteen percent or three hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars of the contract award amount for potential change orders. And two, execute a professional services agreement with Shaft and Wheeler Consulting Civil Engineers for Construction Support Services for the project in the amount of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars.
And and thank you for reading that. Uh and before we just, I have one last sorry question, the contingency amount. What 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 does happen if the contingency amount somehow needs to go over? What what is the process? Is that I I know that shouldn't happen, but just so I understand, if in case I have to refer back to this at some point, how does this work?
Sure, the um I'll just mention that the uh fifteen the fifteen percent is a little bit more than what we would typically request. Usually we ask about ten percent. Um this project is a little bit more complex. That was part of the rationale for it, plus the um the lower bid amount um kind of it it settled it a little bit more um as far as pushing that a little bit more. Anything above and beyond what's being authorized tonight uh would would have to come back to city council. So part of the oversight will be to um ensure that um we notify uh the city manager and and so forth before we get to that point. Um so it wouldn't be anything that would be a a major surprise. Um but we don't anticipate that. And I just want to mention that there is one other recommendation on there um for the execution of other minor agreements related to the project, such as the uh Ocean Colony Homeowners Association Temporary Impact Agreement.
Yeah, you want to add that part, Robert, and then we can second it? Oh, it's just number three on there?
Yeah, what was the wording of that again?
It's uh execute other minor agreements related to the project.
Right, okay. And we'll add a number three, execute other minor agreements.
Cool, do we have a second?
Second.
Beautiful. Uh Jessica, will you walk us through?
Yes, uh council member Rarback?
Yes.
Council member Penrose?
Yes.
Council member Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. And before we move last last little piece on that, that money is all coming out of our sewer enterprise fund, a hundred percent, correct? Just checking. Yep, thank you. All right, we are on to item three B, sustainability program responding to COVID nineteen.
Mayor, council members, um I'm pleased to uh introduce Veronica. And uh we she was here till the wee hours last meeting. And uh we uh thank you for a little uh getting us a little earlier tonight. We really appreciate that. Uh I think this is um an exceptional uh report and some really um incredible updates about what and all the work that's being done despite um the challenges of COVID nineteen. Um and clearly, there are also some um direction in there, which uh which we're also asking for in confirmation um as we move along with that. But for the most part, this is really just an update and um letting you know that we continue to work uh despite the challenges. Thank you, Veronica.
Yep. Hi, everyone. Uh thank you, Mayor Eisen, City Council, for the opportunity to present um much earlier today. I appreciate that. Um again, I'm Veronica Vostinak. I am your sustainability analyst. And I'm here today to talk a little bit about um our sustainability programs and how we're responding to COVID. Um as John mentioned, I'm going to be splitting up this presentation into two different uh sections. The first will be general updates for your information and for the public um to be aware of. And then the second half with the climate action adaptation plan and the disposable foodware ordinance. We have a couple of recommendations for you that I will um give at the end. Uh so first, I'm excited to announce our first Earth Year contest for our new um Earth our Earth Year campaign. So um I was here a couple city council meetings ago and announced our new Earth Year campaign. And we partnered with Republic Services um to do a contest regularly throughout the year surrounding each month's theme. So this month, we have reducing your carbon footprint, and we're asking people to um take pictures and tag us on Instagram for um photos of how they are reducing their carbon footprint at home. Uh we've repartained, we've partnered with Republic Services to provide a prize for these contests. So um the photo that has the most likes on uh May thirty-first at midnight will receive a hundred dollar credit to use with use with Coastmates Delivery Services. Um you can get more information on how to enter the contest and get some inspiration of ways that you can reduce the carbon footprint at home on the link that is listed here on your screen. Um next, we've been working to make a lot of updates on the website. One of the big pieces of feedback that we received from the CAP Outreach Pilot Project was that the community was looking for one central location where they could access a lot of sustainability resources. So we've spent the past couple of months really bulking that up. And you can see on the right, I have some examples, some screenshots of those pages. We have a lot of information on solid waste services, um energy efficiency upgrades and rebates available for people who are interested in doing so in the home. Uh I have information on the upcoming disposable foodware ordinance, the green business program. And of course, we have the all of the Earth Year campaign information on there as well. Um there's a link at the bottom for how to get to the website, but I also wanted to uh provide a little uh screenshot tutorial on the left of how to get there from the main page. Uh I don't, it sometimes it's not intuitive for people. Uh the sustainability program lives underneath Public Works. So if you're on the main page, go to the main menu, you'll find the sustainability pages underneath Public Works. Um next, uh recognizing the current situation, the current financial situation that the city is in, staff recognizes the increased need to apply for and identify uh grant funding opportunities for the sustainability programs. Um up on your screen, I have three programs that we have recently submitted applications to. Um notably, I'd like to point out, we have the California Resilience Challenge, which could provide funding for the preparation of the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. And we've also been partnering with uh J and D Recycling in the county of San Mateo to um secure one of five spots to bring a temporary CRV redemption center to Half Moon Bay. Um and last, for the general updates, I just wanted to put some other things that we've been working on. I know uh everybody is pretty COVID focused right now, very understandably. Um but I wanted to point out that we are still working towards the goals outlined in the Sustainability Implementation Plan, such as the purchasing policy, the Begin Awards. Um and we're also conducting research for possible future ordinances regarding single-use plastics reduction and gas leak lowers. So moving on to some of the bigger projects that we have going on, uh we have the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. You may remember that we had ninety thousand dollars set aside for a cap consultant. Um so earlier this year, pre-COVID, we went through a formal RFP process and at high and had identified a top contender. We had planned to bring that contract to you uh for consideration on April seventh. But um in light of COVID and the city manager's direction to look at costs and and reevaluate, um we took that opportunity to do so. Um luckily, there are a lot of really great resources available to us, including a writing template and technical assistance from the county of San Mateo and their uh consultant DNVGIL. So while it will take more staff time, uh we think we're in good shape to bring this um for the most part in-house and and get started on a lot of um a a lot of those pieces of the cap. Uh we are recommending that that uh we set aside thirty thousand dollars in the CIP uh for next fiscal year to do outreach efforts with a consultant, specifically outreach with the Latino community. Um and then the next, uh the last program I want to talk a little bit more about was the disposable foodware ordinance. I was uh here with you all in person in February, and we had conducted a study session. We had planned to do uh outreach to the this to the impacted businesses in March, uh which ended up being not good timing for for the businesses. So we decided to um take a pause, give the businesses some time to uh get their bearings. And we're proposing to resume that outreach again in the summer to bring the ordinance to you uh in the fall. So a little bit of a delay, but we think that's important um for the businesses that are under additional stress right now. Um so I conclude today with my recommendations. Uh so we are recommending that council today direct staff to initiate work on the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, the CAP, as an in-house project, to authorize staff to return at a later date for city council consideration of a contract with the consultant Meg for outreach assistance, and to direct staff to delay the first reading of the disposable foodware ordinance to September twenty twenty. So I know I talked about a bunch of things pretty quickly, uh so I will leave these recommendations up on the screen, but I'm here uh for any questions and looking forward to hearing your feedback.
All right, let's bring it back to, thank you. Thank you, Veronica, for all your work on this. Uh let's bring it back to council for a questioning um and go from there.
Um mayor, we had uh talked about including uh all kinds of plastic bottles for the disposable foodware ordinance, which went beyond what the county was uh going to implement. I was wondering what the status of that uh change is.
Yeah, so um we we were directed back in February to um go forward with the county's ordinance with a couple revisions as a first step, and then take the time um to do some additional research to look into an additional ordinance to bring in some uh other plastic items such as beverage bottles. And that is something that we're currently working on. Um I'm working in a uh with a group of people throughout the county and other jurisdictions on research.
And ju- just just to be clear, that you got that direction from a council meeting or from, yeah, just just so?
From the ca- from the study session in February, Monday, the eighteenth.
And Mr. Mayor and council members, you might also recall that that secondary direction of looking at the actual going beyond single-use plastic and looking at actual uh plastic water bottles, that actually came out of the March um council priority set workshop. Um so not to separate the two, after that direction was received, that was passed along to Veronica and her team um to to put that together as like a second step of what they were doing. Then they hit the pause on the whole thing. But also remember, uh we'll bring back uh a summary of the priorities that were established back in March. That'll come at your next meeting as well. Matthew will make a pri- a a presentation on that. We'll readdress that direction there because that is where that one popped up. So you'll see that again next meeting.
Good. I just didn't want to let it fall through the cracks.
Yeah. Very good, very good. And um other council members want to weigh in on this topic? Uh anybody else have any questions?
This is Debbie. I have a question. So um you know, I'm just wondering if uh even September might be early, depending on the whole um sort of COVID orders from the state and the 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 idea that um reusable might present, you know, health-related issues? I'm just wondering how we're how we're dealing with um the current regime of um yeah, allowing single-use plastics as a more healthy alternative at this point.
Of course, yeah, I have um also been gathering research. Uh there have been a bunch of orders from the CDC specifically about reusables versus disposables. So I'm currently in the process of compiling a lot of that because I know it's something that the businesses will be wondering about and probably need some direction and resources on. Um but I do want to remind you with the county's ordinance, uh it is not enforceable for one entire year after it's been adopted. So it will still give the businesses an ample amount of time to prepare.
Now, and just just to be clear, the county passed their ordinance when? What, I mean, they voted on it in February twenty twenty. Did it pass then?
It it was either late February or early March, and it did pass. And there have been two two cities, I believe, uh Burlingame and one other city that have passed it.
So so, because I I I had to read that ordinance today to understand everything, to try to dig into it. So there is not really enforceable until, let's just say, March first, twenty twenty-one-ish, more or less?
More or less, yeah.
And it would ours mirror that, or would ours mirror our acceptance date if we were to accept such a thing?
Uh the the way that it is currently written, it would be one year, three hundred and sixty-five days after our adoption.
So it'd be after. Now, was the county going to help us provide oversight uh in for that? And e- even if we're starting at a different start date?
Yes, yes. So they are doing the education and enforcement for all the cities that adopt their ordinance. Uh and they actually, they published their RFP for their consultant to do that work earlier this week. And um within there, it does mention that different cities will have different effective dates. So that is something that they are aware of and.
And and mayor, uh there's um that that's purely your choice as to whether you um as the council wished to move forward on a on a quicker turnaround time. You could align it um with the counties. You could stay on a year. Um you could find somewhere in between that point. Um that a year was aligned at the time, obviously, with the county. Um so I I think we can talk about that and reva- re reassess that. Um you know, as we get closer to actually a point with bringing the ordinance back. But um I think, you know, keep that in mind that that we we can align it with the county's time, or we can stay on a year um um out from that point, or or whatever we wish to do.
So we could wait, just to make sure I understood what you just said, John. We could wait till September or even after to it to adopt, but then say this will go into effect in March, or maybe a little after that, and give a chance for the county to well, one to just see what's happening generally in terms of council member Ru- Ruddick's point about where the health concerns are at that point, the reusables, and also give a chance for the.
Well, we're, you know, it's it's ultimately an ordinance unless you say otherwise is effective thirty days after the second reading. Uh and so what the county decided to do was allow for a long phase in to this. I think at the time, we thought that phase in might be actually maybe too long. Um obviously, there there now it 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 looks genius in in light of kind of everything going on. Um but I, you know, we can certainly come back in September, October, whatever that date comes back to deal with it. And you can establish whatever date you want, in essence, this to become enforceable. And then we will align that. So if that's February or March, you can say that. If it's the following September, October, you can say that. If it's June first, you can say that. So you can, you have you have all the say you want um in within the ordinance. We'll just need to come back and get that direction from you in conjunction with in with introduction of an ordinance.
Because I picture us working carefully with um Chamber and Downtown Business Association on timing the education pieces and what works for folks. Because getting that education piece and making sure the county has the right people uh in place, maybe to help train some of our folks as well. Um people feel a lot more confident once they have that training piece and knowing what to expect. So um it's great. And I appreciate your answer to those questions.
And I I just want to take some time on this topic, sustainability overall with council right now, because uh as Harvey mentioned earlier, council council member Rarback, you know, this is a very forward-looking council in terms of sustainability. I think we're pretty aligned in the in and how aggressive we want to be from a sustainability standpoint. Um and we've made this a top priority, and we want to see a lot of movement from our sustainability analysts. Uh so you know, we we're we're putting the pressure on here. And that that goes into my next question. And that, that goes into my next question, and I'm hoping maybe even the council can direct me on this and maybe yourself. But the Climate Adaptation Plan, the, you know, that whole thing. When I was reading through your staff report on this topic, it was, you know, it's not necessarily something that we specialize in or have the ability to do in-house, you know, unbelievably well, let's just say. I don't know how to put it, but, you know, in, in the staff report, it said it'd be a little bit more generic and we're using the other sources. This to me is something, and we were originally going to hire a consultant to do it. And I understand the saving money aspect of it, but I'm not sure this is an area I want to save money on when it comes to Climate Adaptation Plan. Like, how long-looking is that plan? And how much work goes into it? And are we better served not doing anything with it now? Waiting for a consultant that has the experience and expertise to do it? Maybe we have to put it off because I, I understand we might not be able to afford it now. And focusing on the disposable food service and really doing all the reach-out and all the different pieces that need to be done there. So we focus our efforts a little bit more from that perspective. And I'm just throwing it out there because I think Debbie Ruddick in particular will probably know the Climate Action Plan a little bit better than I do. And like how long-term that is, are there little wins we can get from it? I don't know. So please, Council Debbie, yeah.
If I, if I could speak Mayor to that, I, I, you know, if we didn't feel comfortable bringing this package together, we wouldn't do so. You know, there, there are so many examples, great examples of, of these documents out there. We have the county's resources, you know, and so I, I think that we can do this justice. I think the area that we were most concerned and remain somewhat concerned is the adaptation piece to that issue. And that goes along though with a lot of work that's already been done. The county's sea level rise study and work, the city's sea level rise and analysis work that's been done. We also have the new Sea Level Rise Agency. So I, I think that there are opportunities and ability for us to move that forward as well. We may have to come back and talk about some consultants' assistance on that. And we're, we're, we're realistic about that. But we kind of see the first phase of this as the, is the, is the Climate Action Plan piece. It really is a lot of, of, of detail work and getting our emissions inventory together and doing a lot of pretty mundane work that frankly, I hate to pay a consultant to spend the kind of hourly rate that they charge to do that work and deal with it because it's relatively mundane and pretty straightforward. And we've actually paid for those, a lot of that information already to be compiled. So it's really pulling some of that together. The other things I think we could say is this, is the, is the strategies. They're really, it's tough to find new strategies. We'll certainly look for them. And I think if this community is good at anything, it's identifying strategies and identifying new ways of thinking. And the only way that we're going to really get out there is to talk to the community and tell, have them tell us what it is you think we can go with and deal with it. So I, I know that was a long-winded response and I, and I apologize for that. But, but I do think that, you know, we wouldn't be here if we didn't believe that we could do justice to this. And I think we kind of went along with the idea that this was really a critical piece to moving us forward in, in, in the sustainability program. And that we just didn't feel like we could sit on the sidelines for the next year. We also gained a lot of momentum with the, with the pilot project, with our seniors, with our Latino community, with our youth. And we don't want to lose that momentum either. We, we, the county gave us $60,000 to pull that together. And, and, and Jennifer and our staff did a great job with that. We don't want to lose momentum fully on that. So those are all the reasons kind of behind why we, we brought this package together to you.
Council, Councilwoman Ruddick?
So I, I'm really happy to see that staff is recommending we continue to move forward. I, I feel really good about our, our in-house staff. I know that she's been working on a lot of, you know, pieces like, you know, the PICC clinics and other things. So I actually think that, I, I think she could do more than just borrow from templates. I, I, something tells me that she has, you know, a, a feel already for the community and, and things we could do. So I'd like to let her.
So sorry.
I want your dog to run with that, but I'd like you to run with that.
That was approval.
To the mayor's point about waiting, you know, I, I don't think it's, that's an option because one way or another, even through a climate or an infrastructure stimulus bond that, that may end up incorporating a lot of the elements of a climate bond. You know, we want to be positioned to get grants. And the way we do that is by having adopted plans, right? You have to be sort of ready to do the work under, you know, a grant program. So, you know, we want to have a sort of not shovel-ready, that grant-ready plan that we can show. The, the thing where I think we may need consultant work, I mean, certainly outreach is going to be important, but we're going to want to look at, you know, really dealing with vehicle miles traveled, right? So, you know, we're moving away from levels of congestion, levels of service and transportation to what they call vehicle miles traveled. And at the CKEG meeting last week, there was a really interesting chart showing how radically the county's vehicle miles traveled have been reduced because of the, you know, working at home things. And I think we're going to want to, you know, adopt thresholds of significance, you know? How do we determine that a project's vehicle miles traveled might, you know, tip us in the wrong direction? So I'm, I'm going to be prepared to spend, you know, money to, to look at that because I think for us, that's going to be a real important piece. Like, you know, projects along Highway 1 are going to, say, north of 92 will have larger impacts in terms of vehicle miles traveled, especially visitor serving, you know, the things that are in the downtown area. And, you know, I know we're going to have some policies in the, the LCP, but I, I think we're actually going to need some investment in developing thresholds where we say this project is a problem, you know, in terms of generating, you know, traffic volumes. So I'm glad we're moving forward. We need, I think we can do quite a bit with, with existing staff. Little bit of consultation on outreach, but I, I'd like to know more about how we're going to deal with VMT, vehicle miles traveled in terms of being able to evaluate developments, especially, you know, along Highway 1. I think that's an important part of the Climate Action and Adaptation. And I agree that there's a lot of work on sea level rise and coastal erosion. There's going to be more. There's going to be more guidance. More came out from, you know, BCDC just last month. So I think we can adapt that pretty well. So I'm, I'm happy with the direction, but I think in some cases, we may need to be prepared to spend a little money to make sure we're really getting a grip on our greenhouse gas emissions.
Good.
If, if I could add a couple of things. And I understand about the existing limitations on budget and staff, but I don't want them to fall through the cracks. On an earlier slide, Veronica had listed gas leaf blowers as something to research. And I, again, I don't want that to fall through the cracks. My own personal opinion is that we, yeah, other efforts, right? I, I, I think we should definitely think about banning the gas leaf blowers. And then the other part of sustainability that hasn't been mentioned is reach codes for new buildings that would require them to be all-electric. That can make a big difference. And I think that should be on the list of sustainability projects that we should research and ideally implement. So that's where I'm coming from.
Harvey, just, just, I, I appreciate, because I, I love the ideas. How do we make sure that we don't, that we keep Veronica focused on, like prioritizing that, that list that you just mentioned even with the things that are on there, just so we don't spread her too thin? How would you prioritize, just, just so you can throw it out there in terms of everything that, that's been talked about? You want to try to prioritize that stuff? Because I agree with you.
Well, I'm not prepared right now to, to give you a prioritized list. I just. Yeah.
Got it, got it.
But I just didn't want it to, to slip through the cracks.
Okay. Councilwoman Ruddick, yeah.
One last thing, so. One thing that I think we're going to need to spend some time on is agriculture. So increasingly, you know, the management of agricultural soils and agricultural operations are seen as kind of key in getting at our greenhouse gas emissions. So again, that's, that's sort of a specialty area where we might want the consultants at some point to weigh in, like, what can we do to manage our agricultural operations to, you know, put more carbon into the soil, for instance? And we don't have a lot of grazing in Hefman Bay per se, that's more in the county, I think. But there are other things that agricultural operations can do in terms of water management and even plants. I mean, like, you know, hemp, you might want to encourage hemp. Hemp has great capacity to sequester carbon, you know? You know, is that part of our portfolio? So eggs and other sort of specialty piece in addition to the transportation VMT piece where I can see at some point we might want to, you know, spend a little more time and learn with special expertise.
Yeah, and I wonder if, I wonder if it would behoove us at some point, and you can let me know Veronica or some, or Bob or whatever, but to do a priority-setting meeting for our sustainability efforts, just so we can focus on the right direction given. I mean, it's such a high priority for council right now. I just want to make sure that we're not just putting, I, I love all these ideas and I, I mean, there's so much to accomplish, but I just want to make sure that we're moving on specific things. And that, that, that suits what council's looking for. So I don't know how to create that, but I think it would probably behoove us.
Yeah, so it might be like, what can we do in-house easy to get it moving? What sort of specialty pieces do we need to really, you know, make the sustainability plan screen?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a great next presentation even on all the different topics. Yeah, but go ahead.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could, John here, I, I do kind of have to remind you that a few months ago, we brought the Sustainability Implementation Plan forward and we laid out the strategy and the prioritization and you concurred with that.
Good.
So I agree that, that council can always change their mind and change.
No, we don't need to. What is it? What, what is it then? What are the priorities? Break it down.
What you're, what you're seeing in front of you are the priorities that the council set. Was the, was the disposable foodware, the, and the CAP were the primary. There's some other things in there as well, but that's why we're here. That's why we're aligning these things. We can bring that back. You're going to have a conversation about your, I believe, about your strategic initiatives anyway. So we can re, re, you know, evaluate that. But I do, I do want to just remind you, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, that, yeah, we had brought those forward and we can again, share those back. But again, that's why these are aligned with that. And, and part of that was to look at what we could do realistically staff-wise, what you had said were important to you as a council and what the community said were important. And so that was sort of balanced for, for the fiscal year and moving forward with that. So again, we, we can, we can reevaluate that when you talk about your strategic initiatives and prioritization. But, but that's where this came from.
No, I, I mean, this has been on, this has been a priority of ours for the past, what, two years now? So it's, it's not like it's a new priority. So.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we call this Phase 1.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in. I, I appreciate that because I, I do, I do want to see a lot of movement in the sustainability area. And I mean, I'm still, I, I liked Councilwoman Penrose's, you know, idea back. And I think Harvey talked about it, but the, we were talking about bottled water as well and all, all the various. I want to make an impact on our environment. I, I, I think it is our responsibility as, as stewards of this coast side to protect and, and lead in this area. And so it's, you know, I, that's why I'm trying to figure out the priorities, but I realize we already established them. Fine, these are them. We'll move forward with them. These are great ones, but let's, let's see some movement with them then. Because the, the outreach for the disposable food service, like, I get that COVID's happening right now, but as part of our 6:00 PM call went on, people are saying, well, garbage cans are overflowing with all the, all the, all the garbage from everybody doing the takeout. Like, we are currently killing our environment. And it's, you know, it's like, the sooner we move on this ordinance, the sooner we can make sure that the stuff that's going into our garbage from this new world that we're living in, where people are doing more takeout than ever, is, is being done in a sustainable way, you know? And so we, we've got to do our part. So, I mean, to me, I don't understand why we're not contacting businesses right now because the, the, the county already passed their ordinance. The, all, all the, all the, all the information's there on our website. I went into our website and looked it all up. It's beautiful. Everything's there. So just, all we need to do now is inform everybody that this is the way we're going. Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I, you know, there were, there were several reasons why we didn't do that. First of all, we felt it sort of tone deaf in the, in the midst of.
No, I get it.
This is, a business is really struggling, they, and trying to figure out if they could survive to the next day, to the next week. So there was a kind of a tone issue that we were, that we were concerned about. The other piece of it is, as you know, many businesses frankly aren't even open or barely open and they're sort of not really engaging and going with that. So tho- those were really the reasons behind that. And if we were looking at a year delay, anyway, we can still align with the county's ordinance and we will not have lost anything because it was a year or, so March or whatever, that we wouldn't be implementing these new materials if we were aligning even to the county's ordinance today. So we have not lost any ground at all to this. It was just really respectful of the concerns and issues and challenges that our businesses are having. So that's, that's why, and that's why I said earlier, we can certainly, if you as a council choose, you can align the implementation date earlier and we can, and we can get out the word that you're intending to do this and move this forward now. And so people can start to order the right materials or be ready to order the right materials in less than the year from that point. So I, I don't, I don't think, I think we're saying the same thing with that. I, I, I think we can get where you want to get to and where the council wants to get to as a whole. You know, with that, that's why, you know, just tell us when, at some point, we can come back and talk about when you want to align that ordinance, assuming it is adopted and, and move forward with it.
Yeah, from my perspective, I mean personally, and I'm, I'm totally open to discussion on this. I feel like we should leave this meeting with that being the number one priorities. Let's contact all these businesses and get this started because the county already initiated theirs. I don't want to be too far behind them in the process. And I also need the chamber to be involved heavily in this process and all the different aspects. But to me, the longer we wait on this, the further behind we get, the, the, the least benefit we have from the county initiating their order and, and being able to feed off of all the information that they have.
I just want to point out though, that, you know, a lot of businesses, you know, are really taking it day by day. A lot of them haven't gotten any, you know, stimulus. So I, I, I appreciate John's remarks about being sensitive to that. While at the same time, I understand, you know, the need to sort of keep it rolling. But I think we do want to take the pulse before we, you know, start asking too much of people.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with even going to the chamber first and trying to take a pulse check there and then, and go, you know, whatever. But I, I think we need to, I think we need to start moving on this. I'm just curious to get other council member feedback on that, just so we have a sense.
Well, I, I would agree with, with John. I don't think now is the time to start. Um, I don't think now is the time to start talking directly to businesses about what we, changes we would like to see them institute. Let's give them a chance to get partially open, to recover. Some, some of the businesses we were talking about in March, aren't going to be existing.
Possibly, yeah.
By July, maybe they aren't existing right now. So, um, I think staff has plenty of work to do in gathering the research, in looking at, at, at the single use plastics, at the gas leaf blowers, at, you know, all of the other things that we're talking about. Um, and I think that within the next one or two months, we may have a much better idea of who to talk to and what kind of response we're going to get from them. So I'd like, I'd like not to put any, any hard line, make any decisions other than to follow through and let staff continue to work on it. They know what we want done and they know how critical it is to the environment. They're, they're as concerned as we are. Um, but we have to be fair to the business community. We have to give them a chance to recover and we want to encourage them to recover. You don't want to be saying them, look, you know, on the one hand, um, we want you to recover. On the other hand, we're going to put more restrictions on you. We, we need to, we need to give, give them a grace period to, to get through the worst of this.
Yeah, no, I can follow that argument very clearly. I, I, I see that too. I'm, I'm more on the side of the environment on this one than I am of businesses, because I just feel like it's time to take care of. I mean, the, the longer we wait, the more, the more stuff gets in our trashes, the long, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's bad. But, uh, but I hear you and I agree. So I'm, I'm totally fine with that. So, okay, so before we move on, because I, I, I have a couple of other questions and a couple of other things to talk about real quick. So I looked at our website and I, there's a program I really liked. You took Earth Day. The Earth Day piece, you, you didn't talk about it in your, in your report here, but you talked about it in the staff report. And you, we didn't do Earth Day this year, kind of like because of COVID, but we, you went to an online monthly program. And I liked it. I liked the online program very much. And I, I don't know if it just started, but there's kind of like this contest element of it. And I'm just curious, as I looked at it and I, I say, I said to myself, this is great for school age children was my perspective. And so I'm just curious, have we talked, like, how have we got, how have we promoted this? And have we talked to the superintendent of schools and do you need my help making that happen? Or how have we gotten that out to like the school aged community? Because if we're going to do that all year, I think it's a great program, but I think we need to make sure that we are, you know, advertising it. Cause again, not many people are going to find this where it's buried on, online.
Yeah, we have done so mainly through social media and somewhat through, um, the e-newsletters. Um, we have not reached out to, uh, reach out to schools, but I think that's a, that's a good idea and something that we can definitely put on our list. Um.
And Mr. Ma, and Mr. Mayor, we just had a conversation yesterday about, uh, resket, getting the next two by two meeting with the school district scheduled. We did, that also got paused because of the pandemic. Uh, but we just had a conversation yesterday and Karen is working with the school district to get that scheduled. So it would be a good topic, uh, for that meeting. And then we're going to try to get that in the next month, hopefully.
Yeah, I, I just think that with all the kids schooling from home right now, this is a great extra opportunity for us to educate about the environment to that particular age group. I think parents would take it on. And we would get a lot more visitation and use from it, um, through that. I, I, I think it's a great site. I, I loved, I love the idea. So I just want to keep promoting it. I'm, I'm all in. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well. Um, that, yeah. And then my last question, when I was reading about the consultant for the outreach and just, this is just an education piece for me, you know, it, it was kind of talking about that we, 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 you know, we, we really wanted somebody with outreach efforts for the Latino community in particular. And then when I think of that and I think of $30,000, I feel like we have a Latino outreach person on staff. Is it possible to bring that in-house as opposed to having that be $30,000 that we pay consultant for?
Well, I, John here, Mayor, I, we, we certainly have made no decisions and that'll have to come back for a conversation. Um, this is more than just the Latino outreach. It, it also is, uh, dealing with online, um, social media, um, a whole host of things. Um, but the, the consultant firm that we've, um, that, that we interviewed, we're ready to hire for the entirety of this project, um, are extremely, um, good in this arena. Uh, frankly, um, I, you know, my, my wife was one of their references, um, from, from work in a community, um, in Monterey County that's, that's 80% Hispanic and, and probably 70% um, um, English as a second language kind of skills. Um, so they bring some skills that are there that I, I'm sure that our consult, our in-house, you know, uh, worker could help. But we think that there are things that they can bring to, to the mix. Um, and they also understand planning and the climate action. And the biggest challenge we have sometimes with, with, with folks, it's not the outreach itself. Um, there, there are people who are really good at that. But it's also understanding what we're trying to convey and the information. So putting together materials, information, handouts and things. And that was something we learned in the pilot project, which is that, which is that it's, you know, it's one thing getting folks to talk. And, and a lot of people are good at that. It's getting people to talk about the things that you want them to talk about and need them to talk about on it, that are sometimes technical in nature. And having them convey and deal with that. And that's where I think the consultant can bring that expertise to, to blend those together. And that's why we were, um, advocating for, for that. So there's, um, and certainly we're going to coordinate and supplement that with any in-house assistance we, we can and have Victor and, and, and our other liaison. Um, uh, i- i- is, is great, is great stuff. And, and we're not going to not take advantage of those. But I, I think there is a unique, um, kind of point there where, where it's the technical information and conveying that in a way um, that, that's hard to get from just a layperson coming in and trying to work, um, with that community. So that, that's why we, why we are recommending what we're recommending.
No, no worries. I'll temporarily buy that. I'm all in. Um, and, uh, because the thing is, I feel like Victor, I love Victor. And what he, that guy brings to the table, like in terms of outreach, as, you know, uh, there is nobody else we should be hiring for outreach when we've got somebody of that quality on our staff doing that work. Uh, the, the community trusts him. And so he should be doing outreach. But if we're talking about the creation of the material and the way it's going to be delivered, I, I, I'm, I can buy that.
That's a, that's a whole different issue. Yeah.
Got it, got it. Fair enough. Uh, good. That's all my questions. Um, I'm sorry to occupy so much of that. That's just such a major component of what, uh, there's, there's not, uh, it's really nice to have a council that's this focused on sustainability overall. So I want to, I want to use it for everything I can while we've got it, because, uh, it's a great council that seems to care a lot about the environment. So, um, thank you for taking the time and effort on, on this topic. Uh, with that said, are we ready to entertain a motion? Or does anybody else have anything else they'd like to discuss?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that we direct staff to initiate work on the climate action and adaptation plan as an in-house project. Authorize staff to return at a later date for city council consideration of the contract with consultants. Make for outreach assistance and direct staff to delay first reading of the disposable food bear ordinance to September 2020.
I'll second.
Perfect. Jessica?
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes. And Veronica, we are, we have big expectations for this position. So thank you so much for taking this on.
Of course. Thank you. Excited, excited to get going.
Excellent. We are now moving on to item three C, the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District Annual 202021 and funding request for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And I believe that probably somebody's going to introduce this item and then we'll probably move on to, uh, Cristalyn?
Something's happening. Matthew, you're muted.
Uh huh. I'm sorry about that. Um, can you see the PowerPoint up on the screen?
Yes.
Great. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. I will, as the mayor mentioned, give a brief announcement and then turn the time over to Cristalyn, uh, from the chamber and Dana Doll from the Hotel Business Improvement District. So each year, um, we bring this report to you. Uh, so by way of background, uh, the transient occupancy tax, as you know, is the city's highest revenue source. It typically represents 40% of our annual operating budget. Uh, the T O T, as it's, uh, acronymed, um, is, uh, charged through hotels, motels, bed and breakfast establishments, inns, RV parks, short-term vacation rentals and campgrounds. And it represents 12% of the rent charged by the operator of, uh, those establishments. Uh, this is not a tax on hotels and motels. It is a tax charged to visitors that stay in those establishments. And it's collected by the hotels and other establishments from the visitors and then remitted to the city. And it's, it's really, uh, a recognition of the impacts that tourism have, has on a, a community like ours. And, uh, allows the city to provide services to the residents that are impacted by some of, um, those, by those impacts and, um, to make sure that we continue to provide, uh, a quality experience for people coming to visit. Um, in Half Moon Bay, 95% of our collections come from hotels, uh, with the rest coming from the other types of establishments. In 2018, uh, the city collected 6.6 million, uh, approximately in transient occupancy tax. And in 2019, that number rose to 6.9 million approximately. I- in light of the transient occupancy tax being such an important part of the city's revenues and, um, our ability to serve the community. In 2004, the city formed a hotel business improvement district, uh, which is, um, a way for the hotels here on the coast side to, uh, generate revenues that can be used towards promoting, uh, people coming and staying in those hotels. And, uh, marketing programs that are specific to increasing overnight lodging and, uh, mid-week lodging, which is different than, uh, the leisure visits that we get here on the weekends. Um, and so these funds are a dollar per room per night. It's a flat rate. And all of that money goes to the B I D for those purposes. In 2017, um, the B I D was expanded to not only include hotels in the city of Half Moon Bay, but to include the entire coast side, uh, from Montero down to the Santa Cruz County line. And the Chamber of Commerce is designated as a managing agency. They manage the funds and the activities of the B I D. Handle all the accounting and the reporting, uh, and are a great partner in this endeavor. So the annual report, which was provided as part of this item, and I hope you all have had a chance to review it. Um, a really quick summary of that is, uh, revenues of 215, 216,000 dollars last year. Uh, their expenditures were just under 196,000 dollars. And the surplus revenues in 2019 were used to balance a 2018, uh, deficit of revenues. Uh, their reserves stood at $21,000 as of 1231, 2019. And I will point out, uh, because it may come up later in the conversation, the city budgets and allocates funds on a fiscal year that begins on July 1st and ends on June 30th of each year. The B I D is on an annual budget cycle. That's just how B I Ds are set up. And so as we talk tonight, we are talking specifically about 2019, the calendar year. Uh, if there's any questions about the B I D itself, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise we'll turn the time over to, um, our guest speakers here.
Uh, I, I opened it up to count. I personally do not have any questions, but I, does, does council have any questions before we open up to our guest speakers? I can't see the rest of you. So if you can speak up and if not, I'll, I'll just wait two seconds. Beautiful.
Okay. Uh, so with us tonight, um, are Crystal and Geep from the chamber. As I said, the chamber is the, uh, managing agency for the B I D. And the B I D has a board of directors, which is, uh, a representative from each of the hotels within the, um, the B I D and the city. And the chair of that board, uh, for the last couple of years has been Dana Doll from the beach house in Half Moon Bay. And, uh, we're also going to hear from her. And I think it's a great opportunity to one, hear about the activities of the B I D itself. But also to get, uh, some perspective on what's happening with hotels and tourism right now amid the COVID outbreak and kind of what the future looks like. So with that, uh, Jessica, do we have Cristalyn ready to go?
Yes.
All right. So Cristalyn, if you just want to tell me when, uh, when you want me to switch the slides, I'll happy to do so.
Thank you. Um, I'm actually going to hand it over to Dana to provide the presentation. Um, because I think there's a lot of questions that revolve around what's happening with hotels right now and kind of how that relates to last year versus this year. And she, um, as the board chair is better set to, uh, discuss that. So in that, I'm going to hand it over to Dana.
Okay. So, uh, first, Mayor, Council, thank you for, um, just hearing, um, our request for funding for the next, uh, fiscal year. And I'll just kind of go through, we're going to just do a little bit of a review of 2019 and then kind of go over where we're pivoting and changing um, our objectives, um, due to the COVID for the next fiscal year. So, um, I'm the chair to the B I D. I've been the chair for several years. Um, and I do have a good pulse on what's happening right now. So I will, you know, let's go through what was accomplished in 2019 and we'll start on, um, my next proposal, but feel free to ask any questions. So, um, obviously you guys kind of already understand our mission. Our mission is to just, um, use our assessments, the dollar per room to really, um, pivot and encourage, um, overnight lodging for our district. Um, for, you know, obvious reasons. So you can go to the next one, Matt. So, um, our priorities last year were, um, definitely focusing in on the midweek groups. Um, we really have, um, most of the business right in our backyard. So we concentrated on Silicon Valley and San Francisco. Um, for companies to, to bring, um, that midweek meeting business to, uh, the hotels on the coast. And then, um, we also, the last several years have put together a meeting planner fam trip. And just to kind of remind you, that's a familiarization tour. Um, the hotel years, um, all did this as a collaborative effort. We all put in, um, some meeting planner names. We all took place in, in, uh, inviting meeting planners and put an entire day in tour to show the versatility that we have here on the coast. Um, we were, we had a very successful one last year. We had 27, uh, meeting planners from all different companies. Um, we started off with a, a welcome reception at the Mavericks House. Um, a little breakfast at, uh, Miramar Farms, then ended up touring the Ritz, the lodge, the beach house. Um, and then gave them some opportunities to, to see what the coast has in the way of unique experiences for team building, since that was such a big component to, um, the meetings this last year. Um, so.
May I ask a quick, may I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
Have you ever included anybody from the city in that initial, the, with the fam visit? Just because, I mean, we, we as a city rely on the revenue from the T O T as well. So. the revenue from the T O T as well. So it's just, it's just good to show love from the city as well. Have you ever thought of including uh, somebody from the city at that welcome breakfast or something?
Uh, you actually had a couple of people attend.
Oh, good.
Here, just to, just to kind of see what we were doing. So yes, they got a chance to really kind of see in person the process. So yes, most definitely. Um, and then um, our media is also a really big component of what we do. We have a great P R firm. Um, who Kelly Chamberlain, and she has been successful with um, really getting us in a lot of even um, meeting planning publications. She actually does invite um, journalists that specifically write for meeting publications. So we've been successful with having uh, meeting uh, travel writers attend our fam trips the last few years. Um, and she really also uh, kind of focused a little bit more of her time this last year on um, social media influencers. It seems like, you know, print is going out and social is going in. So she really had a nice balance of the, of the two. Um, and then the last thing is increasing web traffic. Um, Kevin Henney is our web provider. He has done, which we'll go through the numbers in a little bit. But he's been really successful with um, just the uh, traffic into our site. So we'll go to the next. Um, so you could see, this is just um, a, a flash of how our midweek corporate group sales went. You could see that each and every year, um, our numbers increase. Um, so uh, you might notice if you've had a chance to look at this prior to the meeting. Um, because it caught my attention that um, even though there was a less rooms booked, but significantly more revenue was generated. Um, room revenue, and that's mostly because um, several of the um, meetings that landed through our uh, corporate group sales consultant uh, landed at the Ritz Carlton, which has a higher price point than some of the other hotels. So um, and which I'm sure pleases the city. Um, so we continued to see success year over year, which is, you know, what we all want to see. So you could switch the thing. So marketing, again, just to kind of give you an idea with our public relations. Um, we did make a bit of a change on um, our contract for hours per month um, with our, with our P R consultant. Um, we went from two thousand eighteen, um, she had uh, thirty hours and in two thousand nineteen, um, we were, we were, she was giving us twenty-four hours. So you could see just a slight change in the articles that were written, but overall still what we consider as success. Um, and then website statistics, um, Kevin Henney has continued to morph and change our site, um, to get us more attention. Obviously, the new users are hugely important for us to get new people exposed to what we have to offer. And we were able to achieve that. So um, looking at the numbers, again, uh, we had uh, remarkable success in two thousand nineteen. Um, you can go to the next slide. So this shows our occupancy and, and to be honest, I was a little bit surprised. We, you know, here at the Beach House, I can only speak for um, my hotel. Is we've been matching our occupancy year over year for the last eight years. And so I was really surprised to see there was a decline. Um, but I do want to let everyone know that um, because the hotel years have um, had an eight-year uptick. Um, that eight-year was also occupancy and average daily rate. Um, I think the hotels started seeing that, what we call rate resistance, the beginning of the summer. And I think that July number being um, a little bit off from the previous year, going from seventy-eight percent to sixty-six percent was just maybe some of the hotel years not uh, not responding quick enough to that resistance. So, but overall, um, our revenues, you know, uh, exceeded the previous year. So that's good. So um, next slide. So just to kind of give you an idea of what we're doing differently, obviously, there's a lot of thought in um, you know, where we're going from here with, with COVID fresh on the mind. Um, I want to just give you a little bit before I dive into our priorities, kind of give you an idea of my thoughts about an expectation for, for um, for you guys the next fiscal year, July to July. So um, you know, the B, obviously COVID, the shelter in place that happened in March, um, before, before that shelter in place. Um, we all saw rapid declines very quickly, um, as uh, COVID started um, infiltrating Santa Clara. Um, the, when the airlines, um, when China flights were no longer allowed. Um, just so you know, Chi- just that one component for California. Um, China brings in a hundred and forty-five thousand direct flights into uh, California every week. So just that one impact at the very beginning of this, we all started seeing um, major declines. But I can tell you, um, I'm, I've been at the hotel every day since this, since the beginning of the shelter in place. And I've seen the phone volume. I've seen the pent-up demand. I've been receiving the phone calls. I've been answering the phones. And um, we've, and I could tell you that um, April, March, April, the phones did not ring. Um, when we got, when we started moving into May, all of a sudden the phones started ringing. And now um, I have to have full staff here to just manage the phones. And the other, the other um, component here that's important is I had my web provider bring up some analytics on my web traffic from uh, April to May. Um, and I was really surprised to see that, you know, obviously, March, April. Um, we were getting twenty-four percent of what we normally would get that time of year. So year over year, we were doing only twenty-four percent of the, the web traffic. Though we did cancel all of our Adword campaigns and such. But as we, um, two weeks ago, all of a sudden that just completely changed. And the beginning of May went up to thirty-seven percent. These last two weeks, I'm a hundred and fifty-four percent uh, more traffic on my website than this time last year without any Adword campaigns or money going to um, drive traffic. And so when I saw those numbers, I immediately contacted Kevin to see what the visit half moon bay dot org, just to see if there, is there something similar happening um, on the general half moon bay site? And he gave me some great numbers. He almost mimicked the April, March and April being about twenty-six percent of the traffic. And his numbers were even higher than mine. The last two weeks, starting um, at Mother's Day on May tenth through the sixteenth. Um, the visit half moon bay dot org site is a hundred and seventy-four percent over uh, the same week last year. So what that tells me is there is a huge pent-up demand. Um, people are now looking at what their options are. And for me, it's really important for us as a community to capitalize on that leisure business, because we're going to have to pivot away from groups right now. And make up those revenues in our leisure market. And we're going to have competitors. Our competitors are going to be Monterey, Carmel, Napa, uh, Sausalito, Tiburon. So we need to find a way, um, and I'll kind of go through some of that um, at, towards the end of the report on where I think the funding should go. Um, but we need to get our market share because you guys all know that um, you know, you're, we are your biggest revenue source, but we're also the feeding market to many of the small businesses in this town. As well as we employ a lot of people on the coast. So um, and just one other, one other just comment, um, you know, visit half, uh, Visit California put together a report today. And you know, they're pivoting a lot of their funds and they got approval from the state to do so to pivot their funds to the driving market it within California. Um, so they're changing their entire budget and moving to the driver market, which we can piggyback on. Um, but in her report, she said something very um, compelling. She said that twenty percent of cities in California um, have an average of twenty percent of their budget of the taxes that you receive from um, the travel and tourism uh, go directly to the municipal services. And I know we, you know, we represent a, a big portion of your budget and I don't know how much of that budget goes to those municipal services. But she, she said that California households um, save nine hundred and twenty dollars a year. Due to having the tourism and the taxes. Otherwise, those municipal services would be paid by the individual, um, you know, property tax. And so we are a vital part of the community. And I don't know if people really have realized that um, until something like this drastic happens. Um, so I just wanted to point those out, but we can um, now kind of move towards the uh, twenty twenty priorities. So our top priority is obviously pivoting and moving towards our leisure travel. So um, we want to create opportunities, some buzz, drive um, um, drive uh, our drive to destination. And it's great that, you know, a Visit California just announced that they were allowed to use a big portion of their budget for that same thing. So we can definitely um, piggyback on that. Um, generating media, um, right now, I would um, Kelly, with our P R firm, she has generously um, lowered her hours to five hours, um, which is about twenty, only about twenty percent of what she normally does for us um, during COVID, but um, we're getting very close to just really wanting to, to bring her numbers back up. Um, and again, she, she was at um, thirty hours in two thousand eighteen and twenty-four hours in two thousand nineteen. And I would really like to get her up to those two, two thousand eighteen numbers again. Um, and then increase our web traffic. Um, I think that is the biggest bang for our buck to make sure that as people are looking for places to go, that our Adword campaigns are there that are retarget marketing as people look at our site and go somewhere else, that we draw them back in. Um, and then we don't want to stop thinking about corporate groups. We want to have a plan in place. Right now, we did um, we did uh, halt the corporate group consultant at the beginning of COVID. Um, but we do want to have a concise of plan in place, um, and really help the hotels um, uh, really come up with a plan on how they can accommodate groups in the new normal. So that we can be prepared and rebound with a rapid response. Um, and that being said, that the groups, for all the um, associations I'm, I'm involved with. The one thing that is being said over and over again are the ones that will recoup the fastest with the corporate groups are the venues that have versatile outdoor space. And that um, that built, that, that's a great news for us because the Ritz Carlton has a ton of versatile outdoor space. The Beach House has outdoor space, the Lodge has outdoor space. We just all have to um, be open-minded on how we're going to be using that in the future to attract groups. Um, they do say, everyone in the industry is saying that groups over a hundred probably will not come back until twenty twenty-one. But they are saying that um, there is a lot of the tech markets right now that are, are tech businesses, Apple, Google. They've all made announcements that they are um, having their employees work from home for um, the remainder of the year. But they will not be opening their facilities. And uh, um, at a meeting I attended today, uh, they were, uh, a hotel in Palo Alto was saying that those buildings will not be open to the employees, but uh, they, they will start needing to have some meetings come fall and winter. But these meetings are only going to be twenty to thirty people. They're not going to be anything large like they were before, which again, bodes well for the coast. So, and we um, you know, we want to make sure that we're positioned to take advantage of that when that starts moving. So you can go to the next slide. Um, so kind of piggybacking on what I said, um, the digital marketing, I feel is our biggest uh, bang for our buck. Because we can really quantify how our dollars are spent and what that return on investment is. Um, and Kevin has done a great job for us in the past. And so we're thinking digital marketing, about twenty-five thousand is where that money would go. And then public relations. We really need to get Kelly back up to her two thousand eighteen numbers at all possible because she, her and Kevin piggybacking together on really um, getting articles, um, hosting travel writers, um, influencers. Uh, Kelly was hosting a um, K C B S um, travel segment right before COVID and they had to back out. So she still has them kind of in the hopper for when things change. So the, the faster that we can get um, both uh, Kevin and Kelly back up to speed, um, as we see the climate start changing. Um, so that we can get ahead of our competitors to make sure that we get our market share. And I think that's it. So um, love to answer any questions you might have. Um, does anyone have any, any questions for me?
Open it up for questions for counsel. Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Debbie. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say I thought it was an excellent presentation. I think the uh, the strategy for the coming year makes a huge amount of sense to me. And uh, happy to fund it again, happy to fund it at a higher level.
Oh, it's great.
Yeah. I think, uh, I think Councilwoman Ruddock hit it on the head earlier today when she was talking about this. And you know, she was, she was really talking about the city and using a balanced approach with our funds. And uh, I'll actually let her do it because she did such justice to it before. But uh, you want to go back into your balanced approach? Because I, I, I loved what you said when we were talking about this earlier today.
I was just saying that I think, given where we are right now, uh, we have, yes, limited resources. But I think it behooves us to, you know, understand our mission. You know, we're here about public health, safety and, and community. And I think we still need to find a way to support our nonprofit organizations, uh, support our businesses. Um, you know, we don't want to retreat and actually send ourselves on a, into a death spiral, right? So we want to maintain some investment in our community institutions. And you know, our businesses, our um, our hotel industry are a really big part of. And, you know, our businesses, our, um, our hotel industry are a really big part of that. So, um, you know, where we can, I think we need to continue to, um, invest.
Yeah.
And you'll, you'll be happy to know that, um, our fam meeting, even though our, our fam trip that we were planning, um, that was supposed to happen in May, was completely around sustainability, which, um, Jane Batty, which is, she's a wonderful resource for that with Miramar Farms. Um, we were all getting together, even with the restaurants in regards to, um, putting together education component to our fam trip to those meeting planners, um, so that they didn't, they, they can have everything packaged in, in a one-stop shop. That Half Moon Bay is sustainable meetings, what does that mean? And, and having an education component to it. Um, because we felt like we would get more of the admins and the meeting planners. If there was an education component, they would get more approval to come over to the coast, spend the night and, and spend a day on this tour on a workday. So you'll be happy to know that we were working in that direction. And that doesn't necessarily, just because it's COVID and like you guys were all talking about, um, the trash and whatnot. Um, we were like-minded in that way, knowing that that's where the pulse of our, um, Bay Area is. All about sustainability and we wanted to provide that and educate meeting planners on how to achieve that. So, um, and just working with best practices with each other, hotel year to hotel year, restaurant to restaurant on how we can achieve that. And, and, um, Jane was helping us work on some type of certification for that. So we were like-minded, um, with you guys on, on how we were going to even just do our, our familiarization tour.
Yep, very good. Well, I, I, I strongly believe that Half Moon Bay is here as a council to help support our businesses and make sure that we are, are, are doing our part to make sure our businesses are flourishing for a variety of reasons. Uh, and so I just appreciate what you've been doing, Dana. I appreciate what you've been doing, Kristin and Matthew, and bringing this to the table. And, um, yeah, I'm, I'm fully behind it 100%. Uh, as Councilwoman Ruddock talked about, a balanced approach and figuring out how to, are, we do have limited resources at this point in particular, but understanding that we need to prioritize how we spend those resources, this is a priority.
All right, well, thank you very much. Is there any other questions anyone has on the report?
So with that said, if there are questions, please feel free to ask them. And if not, can we entertain a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of other items I need to address, uh, before we actually get to the motion.
Sorry.
So, um, I, I want to second the appreciation for the, for Dana and for Kristin and the work that they do. The annual report gets better every year. Um, the number of statistics that they provide and, and how helpful those statistics are in helping us understand what's happening in, with tourism here on the coast is, is fantastic. So we're just appreciative of their professionalism, their dedication and, uh, and the fact that they're forward-thinking and, and often aligned with us in, in the direction we're headed. And just really appreciate that, working with them. So, uh, there's a couple of things we need to do tonight. You've, you've received the report. One of the things that we have to do is adopt a resolution of intention to levy the annual assessment for the next year. This is not something that happens automatically. The council has to make that decision each year. The process is that we will set a public hearing. We propose June 16th of this year. And then during the, the period between now and June 16th, members of the BID, um, have the opportunity to submit written or oral protests to, uh, the levy. And then, uh, depending on the number of those protests we receive, um, there are considerations that would have to happen at that public hearing. And so we will need to adopt a resolution of intention to levy the annual assessment for the next fiscal year. And, um, and then of course, uh, as you discuss, uh, how you want to move forward, um, the funding request, uh, on the table right now was $40,000 for the next fiscal year due to the differences in fiscal years and appropriate, I think, for us right now, uh, with our budget constraints and concerns about what the future looks like. Um, we've historically been making two payments, one on July 1st and one on January 1st. And so that would be staff's recommendation is what, whatever funding level you, um, so choose to, to provide to the BID that it's split, um, and, and the initial payment is on July 1st. And then we make a secondary payment, uh, around the first of the year. And, um, you, you would just approve that funding request, give us direction. Um, and then it would be brought back to you as part of the recommended budget here in June.
Excellent. Thank you, Matthew, for summarizing. Thank you. Uh, are there questions on this from council or may we entertain a motion?
Mayor Eisen, if I may, I do have one emailed comment.
I'm so sorry, I forgot. Yes, thank you.
Okay, this is from Brad Steinweed. There is no information to be found as to what constituted the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District or what area or areas the district covers, only a list of 20 properties. I request this information be made available. Also, any motion or proposal to extend or expand that district or add to the list of 20 properties. Any more hotels in Half Moon Bay will fast become another South Beach, Miami or Cancun and won't be a place for families or residents to live any longer. That's it.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to respond to that, um, that question, um, off, you know, after the meeting, I'll, I'll reach out to that person and provide that information to them.
Excellent, excellent.
I would suggest that, um, maybe at our August meeting, we ask Dana to come back. And I'm assuming that you will be continuing to, um, gather statistics and information and give us a report, a, a short report on what the status is at that point. I know she'll be giving us updates as time goes along, but I, as a council, I'd like to hear it, given some, something like the way it's been done today.
Just kind of like a piece report, so we have a sense of how well the hotels are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I follow you. Yep. I'm in. Is that, is that doable, Dana?
Yeah, no, I, I have no problem with, um, coming in August and giving you guys a little bit of, you know, hopefully, well, hopefully it'll be good news. Um, do, do know that with the BID, um, the hoteliers cannot talk about occupancy and rate. Um, so we can look at, um, we can look at, um, the BID funds, which tend to be a bit delayed. But I can at least tell you, um, kind of the pulse of what's happening with our website, um, how I feel about, um, how the occupancy is going. Um, but I can't legally ask the other hotels about their occupancy and rate. That's an, we have an antitrust agreement, um, and that's to benefit the public. So, you know, the hotels aren't, um, collaborating together to take advantage of anything. So I won't be able to tell you what their occupancy is or their rate, but I'll be able, definitely be able to give you pulse and what we are seeing, um, on the BID side with our, with our site.
Perfect. Perfect. Good suggestion, Deborah.
And if I could chime in for one second, I would like to say that, um, Deborah's, uh, request actually falls in line with stuff that the chamber is also working on and will be coming to you also in regards to doing an in-depth tourism study and things like that. So our statistics, um, should be getting much better, uh, as this goes on. And it actually works out quite well that we were wanting to start it this year anyway. So it'll be pre or post COVID or in the midst of it, the shelter in place. So, um, we should be more prepared to have such data than we have been in the past.
Great. And perhaps you could be part of that same conversation in August.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Mayor and council members, just so Kristin and Dana can plan ahead, it would probably, it would most likely be the, the August 18th meeting. So we'll shoot for that. If it slips a little bit, it would be September 1st. So August 18th, uh, for your guys' calendars.
Thank you for organizing that. Perfect. Thank you.
If there's no more questions, I'd like to entertain a motion here. And Dana, thank you again for a fantastic, uh, report out. This is clearly money well spent. Um, I'd like to move that we approve the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District Annual Report for 2019. That, two, we adopt a resolution declaring the city's intention to continue the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District, to continue the basis and to levy the assessment for the district and to set a date for the public hearing on the district and the assessment for FY 2020 through 21. And three, approve the $40,000 funding request to be included in the FY 20 to 21 recommended budget. Should I add things about the two different payments there? That's fine as it is.
Well, we'll bring that back as part of the, the budget.
Great recommendation. Okay, then that's the motion.
Well done. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. Harvey's seconding. And then Jessica, would you be so kind?
Yep, Councilmember Rehbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone.
Yes.
Mayor Eisen.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and thank you. Uh, great job, everybody. Before, I, I know this council every now and again likes to take a five-minute break in between. Do you want to take a five-minute break right now or would you like to continue and try to just knock it out?
A, a, a short break myself, but you all don't have to.
Yeah, let's take a short break. Let's take a short five, literally a five minute. It's 9:44. Let's all be back at 9:50 and let's start the five-year capital improvement program workshop.
List, um, for 2021, that was, that you've previously seen. And then we'll go into a little bit more details of our five-year CIP. So again, quick overview, we'll just talk a little bit about the 1920 CIP updates. Um, it really was a tale, um, of two different times. Um, we'll talk a little bit about that and then we'll just jump right into the five years. So for the background, um, pre-COVID, uh, our, our budget was adopted for 1920 at $16.5 million with $33 million in general fund contribution. It included 46 programs and projects and 17 projects scheduled for completion plus, uh, the program, program efforts that were, um, measured separately. After the, after the COVID-19 and the, the budgetary restrictions and the response, um, eight, 1.8 million of that 3 million was returned to the general fund. Eight of the projects, um, that, uh, were, that were scheduled for completion were either delayed or postponed. So in 1920, um, we, we started out really strong. Um, here's the, we have a list here of the work that was completed. Um, notably, I want to just mention the, uh, Ocean View Park, uh, restroom and site improvements project that was recently completed, um, and approved, uh, tonight by the council for the- and approved tonight by the council for the notice of completion. The popular vertical beach vertical access improvements, we'll talk a little bit more in detail. I have a slide that'll show a couple of a nice picture of the of the process. We made quite a bit of headway on 2019 some of our longstanding sewer projects, manhole repair and sewer point repairs. Few of the projects that I just wanted to highlight tonight, the Ocean Colony Pump Station force and force main improvement project, which was approved tonight. This is this project, again, we talked about, will be starting up construction in your in the next few months. We'll move forward with our contract documents. And we'll have a pre-construction meeting with the stakeholders and move from there. Popular Vertical Access, just wanted to share this image courtesy of local resident, Mr. Steve Mallor. This is an aerial image of the progress at popular vertical, at the popular vertical access. I believe this picture was taken yesterday. And we've been making great progress. This project started in May. The contractors are working pretty quickly with access being with with access restricted due to the COVID-19 response. There was a lot of headway that was made. We're currently at a stage where the we will be pouring the the lots of the concrete for the remaining step. Oops, sorry. I wanted to just show that real quick. So as far as the last pieces of it, this is the landing of the of the concrete pad that will be at the base of the staircase. This will be one of the last items that will be poured. It will be that concrete and then there'll be a railing that'll be installed. In the next couple of weeks, this project will be completed. Highway One Safety South Project, we've been moving forward on this project. Again, this one was stalled a little bit by the COVID-19. In the immediate aftermath, we're in the middle of the undergrounding of the high voltage and communication lines across Highway One. That had to be paused. The conduits are all in place. The wires have yet to be removed or relocated underground. Once that is done, in the next couple of weeks, that'll be the end of that phase. We are currently out to bid on the design package for this project. We went out to bid earlier this month. We will be accepting bids on the Fourth of June. It helps to bring back to council some favorable numbers for an award towards the end of the end of next month. We will be having a pre-bid meeting for for potential bidders this Thursday at nine thirty in the morning. If anybody's driving by, that's what we'll be doing out there. Practicing some social distancing on site and also talking with contractors about the project and answering any questions we can. This project, I would say, at the earliest, we're looking at starting construction late fall, just based on how they where we are right now. And with everything that has to get into place before we actually break ground. But that's that's the earliest estimate at the moment. The Highway One Safety North Project, that project's been, that project has continued to operate again, and a little bit of a slowdown with some of the field observations that were underway. We were doing some geotechnical work. There was some additional testing that we need to do for environmental review. Some of that work on site had to be paused due to the response to shelter in place, but we will be picking that up in the near future. At the moment, we're still on schedule to be completed with the design and obtaining Caltrans approval by fall of 2021. No real impacts that that we've felt quite yet on this project. The popular complete streets project that we've been working on over the last year, we've had a number of community meetings. It's been a very engaging group of residents and interested parties. We have, due to the budgetary constraints with the COVID-19 issues, this project was was temporarily put on pause. We are wrapping up a few loose ends with Caltrans Environmental. As far as some of the meetings that we had scheduled prior to the shelter in place and the COVID-19. So we'll be tying up a few loose ends, but for the most part, we're going to be pausing this and revisiting this project as part of the mid-year 2021 budget. Here, this is the recommended list for the upcoming 2021 projects. You can see here, we've we've got a high emphasis, this brown color, this light brown color, this is grouped as the sewer, the sewer program. So all the sanitary sewer projects that we have fall into these groups. You can see there's going to be a heavy emphasis on this particular, this particular piece. We've got quite a number of of projects on the list still, but it's a little bit less than what we had anticipated. Obviously, coming into nineteen, about midway in nineteen twenty. But with what we've got here, we've, we were showing our grant funding sources and our, the general fund budget request that we are requesting tonight. So what's going to be happening is we, overall, the projects will be about $10 million. This, and I wanted to mention, this looks a little bit different from what we have seen in the past. I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties with my PowerPoint. Some of my, I had a bunch, I had quite a number of comments and they've all been wiped away for some reason from my PowerPoint.
Doing great. We wouldn't know. Don't worry.
So I, what I, what I forgot to mention about this table, it's slightly different than what was, that was shown in the staff report at detachment one. This was slightly revised to show how much budget would be funded towards 2021. Some of these projects that we have listed with federal funding and grant funding sources, they are multiple-year construction projects. So that's why it's a little bit different than what you see in your, in your, in the table in the packet. We've tailored it to kind of project how much we would anticipate spending for the upcoming fiscal year. That helps with a lot of other financial related pieces as well, because, you know, for cash flow purposes, it's important to know how much money is coming in and going out, even though a lot of that would be reimbursed by the different grant, grant sources. So anyways, that's, that's the main change that's there, but the list is the same. The numbers and the columns have changed. We, I'm just showing, we're just showing the information a little differently here. All right. So the recommended five-year CIP, this is very high level. I, we've got the program sheets that I can share with you. That's attachment to the staff report, but just wanted to highlight that we have a total of programs and projects for the five-year period is sixty-three, sixteen of them programs, which are the more, the smaller projects that are reoccurring annually. And then we have forty-seven distinct projects with the, and that totals the sixty-three. The estimated five-year budget has been updated since the staff report. We've received new information specifically for the Karrer Park Improvement Project as far as the construction cost projections. And I just want to note that as we go through these annual updates, it's anticipated that those numbers will change as we reanalyze project costs and budgets each year. So that that was a minor change from what was reported earlier in the staff report. So tonight, the motion that will, that's on the table is to approve the 2021 capital project list. And then authorizing staff to present the capital improvement program fiscal year 2021 projects to the planning commission for finding a general plan consistency. Wanted to highlight that that's a little bit different than what was in the agenda, and I apologize for that mistake. But that this is, this is what we'll be requesting to take to the planning commission. And then last but not least, authorizing the administrative services department to allocate $950,000 of general funds for the 2021 capital budget. That was it for the presentation. I have, as I mentioned, I have everything loaded on the PowerPoint if you want to go through anything specific. And that's, that's the end of my presentation.
Excellent. Great presentation, Moss. Thank you for your time, effort, and work on our capital improvement, getting the investment in our infrastructure here in Half Moon Bay. Appreciate it. Open it up for council for any quick clarifying questions, and then we can go to public comment, and then we can go back to deliberation.
Yes, I didn't see anything about mid-year requests on, on this presentation that would, that were in the agenda packet. What I had seen there, one of the things that I was concerned about was the Highway One Trail to Hatch School. And I wanted to talk about that. Maybe now is not the correct time, but is, is that still on your list of things to be considered at mid-year?
Yes, and I apologize for omitting that. I have the prioritization list that's in the staff report. So the four projects that we have as the recommended for mid-year consideration are the popular complete street project, the Highway One Kelly Avenue intersection improvement project, that connection to Hatch Elementary, as well as the popular beach gate waste plant.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that moved up. And my reason for that is the kids may be going back to school in the fall. And with the lack of public transportation or school busing to Fair Lawn for all the kids from Moon Ridge, we're talking about serious safety risk for a bunch of these young kids who are going to be walking from Moon Ridge in particular, but also from downtown Half Moon Bay over to Hatch. And that's, that's critical.
Councilmember, I think there's some, perhaps some confusion. First, this project was to improve existing easement work that's already in the neighborhood. So this isn't a Highway One connection point. This would be to improve already existing easements within the Alsace or neighborhood there. So that's, that's, that's one piece of this. The other piece of this, this is for design, a piece to that. There's still a construction piece and we're looking for grant funding, but that, that's a small amount of money and certainly at council's discretion, you could adjust some things and move from there.
So what you're saying is there is, there is nothing in this budget about a safe path to school for children from Moon Ridge to Hatch?
So, no. There isn't the bigger picture of the five-year, but that is one of those unfunded areas. We're talking about a multimillion-dollar project moving Naomi Patrick's Trail southward to, to the intersection at, at Merrimoney's Point Road, for example. That's in the larger plan, but that's not in, in the funding resources that we have. And there's been no design, no, no work on that. We can certainly start to look at that. But that is a significant undertaking, because if you look at the, at the east side of the highway, it drops off precipitously. And if you look at the west side of the highway, you've got driveway after driveway after driveway. So that is going to be an unbelievably challenging connection and expensive connection project. But again, that, that's, that, that's where the resources allow us to go at this point.
Yeah, that one, that one's major, and we would need the county to help us with that as well, I would think, you know, knowing that that's county property currently.
We will certainly mine, we will certainly mine for funding, but that one's going to take some time to get to.
That one's far off. No, I get it.
Yeah, as part, and just to echo John's mentioning, as part of the, you know, as part of our operating budget, we're going to be looking at opportunities for funding as, as they become available. You know, active transportation program will be coming up in the next few months. So there are several projects that would fit the bill and we'll consider, we'll continue to look for funding for these long-term projects. But yeah, that, that particular portion to Moon Ridge is about two and a half million was estimated based on the distance.
Good. Are there any other questions? Or are we ready for a motion? Good. So there is what we are looking to go with from a motion perspective up on the screen.
I can make the motion.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the fiscal year FY 2020, 21 capital project list. And that one, number two, that we authorize staff to present the capital improvement program fiscal year 2020, 21 projects to the planning commission for finding of general plan consistency. And three, authorize the administrative services department to allocate $950,000 of general funds for the FY 2021 capital budget.
Second.
Jessica, will you do the honors?
Yes, Councilmember Rorbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Very good. I'm excited that we are investing in our city and our infrastructure and especially taking care of a lot of sewer projects moving forward. It's, it warms my heart to know that we're going to have a good sewer system here in Half Moon Bay. Next, item three E, City Council Rules of Procedure and Decorum.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Eisen. This item is a review of the city council's rules of procedure and decorum document. At a meeting earlier this year, the council gave consensus for staff to return with a modification to rules document to remove the eleven o'clock end time provision. The council expressed that while they would still want to end by eleven o'clock, it was preferred that the requirement for motions to extend be removed. Shortly after that direction, COVID became part of our lives and the item was pushed to make room for more pressing matters at the time. It is now before you tonight for consideration, as well as an opportunity to provide any documents, provide any comments on the document as a whole. So at this time, a council discussion is welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the main reason we brought this up, just so we know, was the eleven o'clock piece. And I think it shows in the discussion area of our staff report, where it says that the councils, city council staffers returning with rules of prevention. Notably, it considers a, considers a, a consideration of whether the city council would like to delete the requirement that meetings conclude by 11:00 PM unless extended by the majority vote of council. So that, I think that was the main reason we ended up bringing this up. But if, obviously, anything you guys want to bring up is on the table.
I don't have anything to add to that. I think it's just, it's good that we see it once in a year. We don't forget. I mean, we usually just go to one, you know, new council member training in Sacramento, and then it's over. And then, you know. But I do know that every city has this, and it's just good to review it, I think, once a year for, for changes or just to review it.
Yeah, I'm in. I read through it again. I like, I actually like a lot of stuff that's in there as I, as I went through it. I was like, oh, that's, that's good to remember some of that stuff. But this one in particular, that 11:00 PM, I am 100% okay removing that piece where we have to extend the meeting and then extend it again and this and that. It's just kind of like, maybe we can do one time, and if we want to extend the meeting at 11, we can say, do we want to do it? But I mean, it just takes time. And it's just, it has us all looking at the clock. And maybe that's the purpose of it, but I, I kind of, I'm okay removing it. I'm totally open to whatever you guys want to do.
I'm the agnostic one, Larry, the other.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Anyone else?
I guess we should remove it.
Yeah, let's remove it. Boom. Do we have a motion? Because we don't have to talk about this to death.
Don't move.
Good.
Second.
Perfect. Jessica?
Councilmember Rorbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes. Do you, do you have enough direction with that? It's obviously per staff recommendation. So yeah, yeah, good. Okay. And then I'm moving to a commission and committee updates.
I don't believe we have any.
No, me neither. Good. Future discussion, possible agenda items. Okay, City Council reports. And then is it okay if I call for adjournment? Then is everybody cool with that? I would like to adjourn the five nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick announcement.
I'm so sorry. Go for it.
I was muted. Sorry. Quick announcement.
I was muted. Sorry. Quick announcement that just tails from the beginning of our meeting. So I have scheduled a meeting with Mike Cogley that's going to occur tomorrow morning. So I will send you, it, it sounds like you're going to participate in the 12:30 call. So I'll send you a text and let you know how that conversation goes. I also got a return email from the superintendent from state parks and he absolutely said there is no way that they can open the parking lots by this weekend. So we need to prepare for Memorial Day weekend. I think it is going to be a busy one. So those are the two messages I wanted to convey since those happened after the beginning of the meeting tonight.
Good. Thank you. Wow, you're, you're busy.
Well, at the same time, we're not going to, they're not going to rescind the 11 to 5 rule. So maybe that incomprehensibility will keep some.
The only time Mike Cogley can meet with me is tomorrow morning at 7:30.
Oh, fun. They must have something going on. They moved our appointment tomorrow from 12:30 to 1:30.
Oh.
So they, they probably have some stuff going on. But very good. So may I then, is anything else?
No. That's it, Mayor. Thanks.
May I then conclude the 5/19/2020 city council meeting here in beautiful Half Moon Bay? Thank you all for attending and contributing. Great conversation. I look forward to speaking with you all at another date.
Be safe, everyone, and have a lovely holiday weekend.
Yeah.
Same to you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Bob.